Just be mindful of that. So I don't really think we can all tell everybody's here.
Well, it's a beautiful place, so exactly.
Yeah, that's right. All right.
Yeah, and if you could phrase it as, oh, presence or complain because live streaming goes out of somebody's absence, we had to put it on since we have to screen and stuff.
Go ahead and do it. Michelle, you want to do real? Attorney Hockman?
President.
Attorney Of Warren?
President.
Commissioner Perry?
President.
Commissioner Brown?
President.
Mayor Jones? Present. And Commissioner Rose?
All present.
All right. Do we have anybody signed in to talk tonight? Any public concerns? Doc, did you have any? Anything for us tonight?
Uh, I was just gonna go over the Koi Pond pump. And
Does everybody think we're getting employee enough?
Yeah. I think the other stuff we were gonna wait till next, next time. But there's uh And then in the streets on the streets, we brought some pictures today. When I was mowing the kinda show, I didn't know if y'all So what's happening is where we've had so much rain, everybody's grass has grown and they're not getting it mowed and they're blowing it out. Well, what it's doing is it's getting up on our sidewalks and lining down the streets. And then it's turning into soil and then we're getting weeds and I'm having to spray every other week. Keep it up and that's what I know she was trying. I'm trying to help you out. I'm trying to get the sweet sweeper here, but we do need one just because if y'all look down through it, it's built up and it's I did these last week and that was just after the one rain that started by the next big heavy rain, our drains get covered and I'm having to clean them every week. Which I don't charge a fortune, but it is costing money every week to upkeep it. And I think the street, if we could get the street sweeper down here sooner and later, it would help. I think me and Dale talked about it a month or two ago.
Well, and I was gonna point out last time I was on, I have city managers have changed your sound with the person who's in and said, there'd be no problem.
I spoke with the, the mayor and the mayor has agreed to let them come out. So they, it's just a matter of if we want them two or three times and I need to call Rob through him back and let him know.
Yeah, yeah. It's in the the sooner the better just because it's built up over a couple of years. And then I know we we talked about doing it in June and we didn't and I started looking up pumps. And they're only about a hundred dollars to buy the, and then me and Bill Bill said we'd do it for free. As far as getting it all back now, I won't touch the electric. I know the box is there and we'll dig to it as long as it still works when we plug it in. That's fine. If not, I know Rob Jones talked about doing it for free if we do it. But as soon as I've, I've looked up three or four, so all your bins of water, submersible Koi Pond pump or water pump and they're on Amazon anywhere from eighty-nine to a hundred and nineteen bucks. And all we got
That you wanna buy and get reimbursed for it or do you want us to buy it?
Um either way, it doesn't matter. I can show it to her. I can just send her the link and she can order it right straight here.
And do we one hundred percent have the right like measurements? We know what the measure?
Oh, yeah, it's um, I was it's in the kitchen now, yeah. Plumbing, uh whatever it is, me and Bill Bill just buy a two dollar adapter and glue it on and, and run it right back up.
Oh, it's um I kinda talked to you about it a little while ago. It's already approved, so if you go ahead and order whatever you
I'm gonna let, cause he's the plumber, Bill Bill and I'm more me, I'm gonna go up to his house, let him pick the what he thinks will be the best and then we'll put it in for free.
What he thought, what's the purpose of doing it this year? You got about two months.
What's that? On your life? Yeah.
Two months.
Same round sponge bath?
Yeah, I think it, it doesn't matter to me when we do it or if we order it and just have it so we can do it first of March. I will tell you, it's a lot better when it's warm to get in that water than
So you gotta lift that big giant round rock to it, don't you?
No, uh we can slide it. I, well, last time I brought my side by side and the winch and I slid a little bit and then those trays will come out. And then me and Bill Bill got down in there and I just waited down in there and got it all to where it goes. So now the plug box it came out, we pulled it out, but it's gonna have to be dug out. It's in there and I'm gonna try to I'll let you all look at it when we get there, figure out, we might need to put some kind of cover on there to where we don't lose that again, because it's been buried ever since I've been here. I've never known where it was at. So forget that.
So question, um, when you mentioned that a few months ago, I looked up and this will be the third time we've replaced it.
Okay.
So my suggestion is we do it this way, it'll be cheaper, but if it breaks again, we hire someone like the diamond pole or cons people or somebody come down and say, we need this fixed, so it lasts for five, ten years.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna work fine, but for the cheese break and I, their nickname is
Well, the last time we cleaned it, I didn't, we didn't replace it. When me and Cook fixed it last time
You used the same one?
We used the same one. What you ended, what we ended up doing and make it last, last time is where that sediment eventually just fills up over there. It's just like any kind of sump pump. We put it up on a block. And so until it fills up to that block, it won't do, it won't get clogged up again. And our plan is before is the cities always came and pumped that out for us like they did last before we put it in, we need to have it pumped, but they've always done that for free.
And I see him maintaining that trough has helped a lot because the Koi Pond pump had a, what do they call it? True chewer? Some of these, they'd get algae in there and that would cause issues years ago, but it, since he keeps it clean, I've seen algae.
I mean, there's still, you're still gonna get some, but it's not funnier as much. And it's, well, and if, I don't clean it from October to March, just the winter, I don't clean the trough. But it'll be have that much sediment in it. And if that eventually gets up, it's gonna go down and fill all that up. And now when we take it out of it, the majority of it we get and take it, put it in trash cans or wheelbarrows and take it and fill holes with it. So instead of it making it on down in there. So and I think that was the only, so any other questions y'all had for me on stuff that needs to be done around here? Cleaned up or?
And so?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm still going out there.
Did you, did you say that there was a blower in the building up there?
No, I'm, I've got one, I've got it at home. I need to bring it. I've got an electric, just a regular. These old women, when I start mowing their yard, these widows, they have all these blowers. I got a couple of the plug-in guns that they give me and I'm not gonna use them. I was gonna leave one and just put, give it to you all, put city of state and then anybody that rents it, it'll be sitting in there. And just blow the building out if stuff's got in there or they need to clean up afterwards. Do any of y'all have issue with that?
No.
I don't know.
It doesn't cost y'all anything and I'm not gonna use them. So
I was trying to fix the lights back there. I thought there, one of the strands was destroyed. So I took it down and tossed it and then the uh other strand is still up and it works.
It does work?
Yeah.
That works really good.
Uh, and maybe get ready for market, I'm gonna, I pretty much stay put on that stuff when I put it up. So
Well, if you all don't have any other questions for me, I just hadn't stopped in and I wanted to. But I'll get this, I'll go talk to Bill Bill tonight and we'll figure that out and we'll at least get it and then get it cleaned out and then we'll decide if y'all wanna hook it up this year or not. I gotta agree with you in a way. If time we get it pumped out, there's no use it sitting in water all winter if it's end of September before we get it all completed. So, but at least have it ready to go first thing in the spring. All right, thank you all.
My concerns about the tires, uh, up to Transcend and they were given to cheap last time.
Oh, I've got it. I was just hot. It was that nine hundred degree day and I was frustrated. Really, it, it it's all done and taken care of.
Um, I would recommend that, um, before we do this, we want shooting that we send down post drivers, something to make sure uh, just to try to And you can start citing that there's an order to buy. I have a question, should we then every possibility of painting, should we paint before streaming? Because we chip all that paint off, it's gonna be
I, I called and left a message for him today. It's like, he hasn't called, he can call me back yet, but as soon as I hear something.
Is that the for lines and stuff? What's that? The curves and the lines and stuff? Yeah, we're paying. And are we getting the crew to come in that those are for free?
That's what I'm trying to call Darren.
Well, I don't think it's for free. I think by the way, we have to pay per person. Okay, very cool. Cheeser.
Has anybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
No. Public concerns? That's Janice Wise. Not Janice Jones.
It's a W?
Uh, W I C, W I S C. W I S C. You don't wanna be told this.
Well, you guys are looking that over. Um, I did have before I forget. Someone asked if we are going to waive the fee for the number square this year and the two twenty-seven yards now.
Oh, yes, we should.
You need to vote on that. Yeah.
And, and is it, is it, this is not under waiver or allow anybody that wants to set up there?
Sorry.
And you said not only to waive it, but to allow anybody wants to set up a whatever, a payday. I saw it and thank you. I thought we were in group. Yeah, thanks, um this is all most you don't think there'll be insurance?
Be any kind of rate just to get all of them.
Uh, so kind of rehab I just don't want by the stuff like that. For your well, I submit. Yeah, I got a message July twenty-fourth.
Um, no, I don't think so. The meeting that we, anyone
Uh, right here. Rachel, she would be sworn in and and to uh, John Johnson, he's sworn in, July first.
Yeah, so it's that two, which is it's in this on this page here, and he's writing about a video to Megan Brown. Those comments of Megan Brown, it's to John Johnson, so on the end of the last verse, it's fixing a year, may have sworn in that. I thought it says just like that I used to visit it, but I was supposed to be sworn in, I was going first, but I was sworn in.
Yeah. So I mean
I think it was a normal meeting because especially me, this guy.
I was talking about, it was like, read the word, it's passing it into you.
Pass the budget, I was pass the budget.
That's true, yeah. Are these the ones trouble compiled? So these are from a month ago.
Yeah.
So I'm actually, I don't remember. Read it more than just to gain that right then.
That's why I was that, that's the way that I
Yes. There is thirty, that's one of the services. I was like, you got one, yeah. And so I started standing off there. Ready to ask for this.
Is everyone finished with the, with the minutes?
Yes.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
A motion, grabbing your crew, the June twenty-four, twenty twenty-five minutes, which the proposed changes.
I'll be too.
All in the favor?
I have to accuse myself of this.
Yeah, I've stayed too. Maybe because I read a few minutes on the way down here and that's all I've got in my mind. I'm like, I don't remember if that's me. No, I know, I knew on the side where I was on that track.
Police department?
Um couple things. The uh I gave Mr. Terry the call for service, the my fifth report.
Thank you.
We had twenty-two call of service in the month of July. We had applied back in March for a a grant to purchase ammo from the Department of Homeland Security. And we got the note in June and I got a phone call just a week or so ago from Mike R., who's with the Department of Homeland Security, who said that they had allocated more funds, so we got approved for fifty-three hundred dollars of just ammo. So great, just as soon as we get that contract signed, we'll be able to uh procure that and I will take care of it for the next year, maybe two.
Chief, somebody mentioned there's a grant agreement that the city commission authorized to bear some.
I did send it to you all. I did not print it out.
Okay, so and I looked at it and I think that's you just speak on this, you follow it. So what if uh, any commissioner Perry made a motion, it's a memorandum of agreement between the uh office of, the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security city, it's uh five thousand and three hundred dollars for purchase uh two cases of nine millimeter and eight cases of point two two three ammunition. Dave, is there anything else? I don't know. So that's it.
That's it, great.
Almost.
In a second.
How's that?
All those in favor?
Chief, do y'all keep a log when that taking down? Case down the road, somebody comes in from state and where's it at, stuff like that?
We do not, we don't, we carry just what we carry on the belt, you know, we carry one box of vehicle with us.
Now, assuming you go to the firing range to call that with it too.
Yeah. That's, that is included, the duty ammo and the private ammo.
Got you.
Can you take a buddy?
Uh, also, uh the uh flock camera the P T Z video camera that we handled, put across from the school, is jammed and I've put in a work order with lock and they called me back by eight o'clock last night and said she was gonna put an accelerated work order in for that to, to get that repaired and switched with any, so that should get taken care of. Also, um I don't know if anybody's seen it yet and I'm probably not, kind of in the streets, but I was contacted by J Mar Technologies, that's a traffic control company out of Pennsylvania. And they have what's called a Black Cat two radar. It's a indiscreet box. It's mounted actually on utility pole in front of Commissioner Meadows' home right now. I put it up today. It uh tracks uh vehicle traffic. It'll, you set it up. If I leave it up for three or four days, it will tell me how many cars passed in both directions. It'll give you the average speed. It will tell you uh the best time to do traffic enforcement, if you have complaints. Sorry.
I said fifty-five, just my
If you get traffic complaints, uh, you can set it up in front of that person's house, wherever, you know, have utility pole or a signpost. You can mount it on there and leave it for a high volume and leave it on there and it generates a report. And you can hand it to the person that made the complaint, show them that their area is
And this does not, this does not take anybody's license plate number?
Just a test for that?
It's just
That's all it is. And it would, it would help me as far as being a one man department now, uh, giving the letter guideline on strategic times to do traffic enforcement and things like that, because it tells you the times of day that the traffic is headed in for the, their most violations are occurring.
What's it called?
It's called um Black Cat Radar.
It'll give you an average speed maintain.
It, it will tell you if you, if you set it up to, like I've got this one set for thirty-five miles an hour. And it generally ten miles an hour over is kind of the basic, what we give as far as uh leeway, one way or another, and it will tell you how many vehicles passed at certain times that are in the uh traffic violation speed, you know, anything over forty-five would be that that violation being, it tells you uh what times, you know, gives you that, a good idea of what time to be there to enforce traffic. So, you know, a lot of times Koi Pond tractor late night or early morning is probably a good time.
Six forty-eight gas, been running on the first ten till the time that it was at on that speed descent, like if you had somebody to come by and do the hundred.
Maybe why not? I, I don't know, because I don't have any data.
I was just wondering if we could use that in relationship to the flock. And we seen somebody another hundred and twenty on Main Street. Other, maybe it was a cop, I don't know.
But that's gonna do that much, because if you can establish the data that comes through it for, like if it were like the police or whatever that came through. So it's not just like a random theater.
You know, whether it's a large vehicle or a motorcycle or motor vehicle, you know, passenger car, it will, it will give you that stat as well, but
I guess my question would be, what would be the purpose of letting them get it? Because not, tell me if I'm wrong, but the flock is supposed to be guaranteed. We're not using that court proceedings, that can't be used to prosecute anybody, so they can show their location at that time, but we can't put them in the car, right? I mean
Exactly, it's like, you know, you, it'll give you the register owner when you run the tag, but it'll give you any information other than a picture of the car.
I was just, it was just in regards to if that has passed the new uh, basically you can write tickets via video or a long term, then you can set up somewhere else. Same as posted today.
I could see it in Georgia.
That's scary.
Yeah, you don't know what I'm talking about? Like you can
You're talking about you're talking about the remote classical or like
So they put us a sign, I feel like I'm really getting along. They do a remote radar. If you break, especially it's supposed to be in warp zones. It's supposed to be like sometimes they're first ones to die today. Yeah, they put it in a warp zone.
I was gonna say
I didn't hear it. I didn't know.
Other states, yeah. I was gonna say, there's a, there's a, a place that I drive there in Alabama that gets strictly enforced, like if you speed in there downtown, that it like it'll light up red and blue and it will
All right, yeah. They do uh, like on the Pennsylvania turnpike, they do, it's like basketball. You go through each stoplight and if you get to the next stoplight, it's bigger than you
You estimate your time.
It'll, it'll, it'll issue you a ticket or
You should go, I, I, I would for this. If it helps you utilize your time there.
Well, definitely, they probably do that, but we have a the key made in the mail yesterday. I got it installed today and I can move it two or three times over the course of the next thirty days.
Thanks.
We can, they can to uh report it the next minute.
You could also take that information, put it on Facebook.
I think we should, especially if you find a place that people are, oh, I swear to God, I'm a hundred, then we should, we've got the data here.
There's only three people.
Yeah. So, and that's I wouldn't even be assuming, but what I'm hearing is you would probably use that to work with the police commissioner and design the times that you could go out and try to enforce a different times.
Once I get a report, I can
So currently what you've got going on is like a, a trial. I hit thirty day trial.
I got a thirty day demo period.
And if you like it, we can proceed.
And what was the cost of it?
It's three thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars.
One time?
One time.
Oh, okay. And if it breaks?
It has full time free warranty. It's got full time free support, uh, all the software updates that you develop anytime in the future, they're all free.
Tech support, if you can't figure it out.
I liked the link you sent for us all to hear at home about ourselves. I thought if we could have anything on that for it, Josh, too, like that'd be cool. They were the same though. I like it too.
She uh, she told me that uh, last week she had uh bought or sent one to uh, Kenton's, Kenton's Kentucky, they purchased one. They had done the same thirty day trial and they that's right.
After Cody's just been on my mailbox.
I know, but the other person is top two, chief all good, throw it down and probably
I'd also be interested to track to see if things are improving. Like if uh, if you find your hotspots of when everybody seems to be coming through a little faster. And if there's police presence out there and you see that that's, as they slow people downtown. Then that shows that that was worth the money.
Yeah, we'll have to move it to track that. We just move it around to different locations. And then hit the same locations off the two down the road and
The speed sign.
What about technology?
Uh, what is that? The thirty-five mile an hour, like if you go over it, would you cover it into the
Cover it into town.
How does that?
The solar one?
Yeah.
There's overcast, it's a probably a charge.
It's a target today.
I'm gonna make sure I'm gonna fit it with egg, but
I would uh I would, if we do motion to do all this, I think we should make a video and let everybody know what this is, this device and what it actually
Share a link, I'm sure they got a link.
Well, like I think we personally make a video.
Are you gonna get in the bus, saying you're a professor down in Missouri?
But maybe show the data.
Just show what that's for sure that, yeah, show the data for there is
So that, so that people are understanding that it's not something that is, it's not taking a picture of your license plate, it's not getting any of your personal information, it's just collected data.
You know, with that, I would, I would hope we would share all data points. Because if we do get one that's speedy, you know, we don't wanna not publish it and then publish the ones that aren't speedy and push it on. Let them see what's going on and
I bet it would really help.
I bet it would really help that way.
I just wonder, I deciphered police vehicles or something rolling through here, because they roll.
Well, you'd have dispatch times, you could, if there's somebody crazy like eighty nine miles.
I mean, just to get to your point, you know, they're not gonna display all of it, it's like, well.
Yeah, we could probably.
We can test that there. We, I mean, we can.
Next time they go back, see how best we can do it.
No, it's not that bad. I mean, I can't handle it.
Right, and you don't want an outlier just for your data, so typically embedded maintenance management, you would throw out the outliers. You know, if you got a ninety two mile an hour guy. That's not happening every day, so he gets thrown out. If you got one that's doing five miles an hour, that gets thrown out too, you know, it's. You want the middle, what are they doing?
Well. I mean, I get that, but. It's not crazy, I think. She texted me about, remember the guy who was in the tree next to Dollar Gym? He, they said they estimate his speed a hundred and thirty five miles an hour down to here. So I mean, I wouldn't throw him out where you can't see them, because people do do that at night. He just had like twelve buck at night, I mean. He almost died, he made that in the game, that second. You know what I'm talking about, right?
Don, you got anything else?
I think that's all I have.
Get us a date the next time we come back, right? That's me.
Uh for the same thing John, I'll run numbers to. Bishop Perry, we had eleven total, had a couple of. Actual two structured fires, uh. Motor vehicle accident, we have five medical calls and then just some mist- mistling and some other calls. Uh our personnel did a hundred hours of training this past month. In-house training. Uh we gotta start tracking. Training hours if they get outside, like going to five different fire schools and things like that that they do on their own, that's whether. Just to show like our commitment from our guy, how much they're actually doing, you know, on their own. Uh but this is actual a hundred hours of in-house training that we offer. Every month. Hope with uh, I think he spoke with Michelle about our insurance claim on our building, about our roof leaking and the girds and everything, I think he gave her all the information to start. Steaming forward, but during the insurance payment, getting the repairs made. Mayor, I have the last two radios to give you here.
Great.
That's all I have.
Can you uh. Also let me know when do you use the training center up there? Like, are you using it every week or?
Pretty much every week, as long as the weather, it's not storming or.
Is there like a set day that you do that on or?
Monday nights from. Anywhere from calls from five thirty to nine thirty at night. Yeah, if we could have that kind of regularly mode, that would be greatly appreciated.
Please add that now.
Just from my own knowledge, uh whenever you all do the trainings, are you, were you saying five thirty to nine thirty, like that's how long it lasts? Or it's just somewhere in between that, it'd be like an hour?
How people start showing about five thirty, we try to start right at six. It usually goes to nine, depending what we're doing, whether it's holding and it's. Involved training, uh it might go out at nine thirty, sometimes ten o'clock at night, just depends on what we're doing, about time we get cleaned up and everything. We don't try to be out there, we don't want to be up there much more than. I'm thirty, because it's, you have to drive past somebody's house and everything, you know, we don't want to be a nuisance to people.
Very cool.
Something works?
That would be me. Uh so the only few things I have is one. The website for the bricks program is almost ready. Uh I expect that to be up this week. Um this week coming up, not this week. And uh. Uh since we weren't able to connect payment, uh. Uh whoever fills out through the bricks, they're just gonna print a form and send the form in here with a check. Until we can get the payment for it and that bit. Uh I didn't want to hold this up any longer, wait until. Um so that's good news, they're almost done with that. Uh and then everybody got their email for the civic plus. Um basically. What I did was I did some research with um. Oh, oh, thirty different cities to see who they were using. Uh for uh keeping track of their website stuff, you know, and so forth then. The one thing that sort of plus stood out to me, and the reason why we're doing that, you and hang on. Uh is that when they build your website, they build it with the end user in mind so that. Uh anybody can go ahead and make their updates, they don't have to be called to do an update. Or if you change commissioners or whatever, that's like easy upload of a picture and change title, stuff like that. It doesn't require all the stuff that we have to go through now. Uh or lockdown passwords and all that good stuff. Uh so anyways, uh they are the ones that ran the Shorestown system and Louisville system and. Phillyville system and Madison County and so they do a lot of cities around this, so. Uh I think that'd be worth talking to, so that's why I set up that meeting. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Um I've got a few things aside. You won't have a few things as well, but um I got with Lori Saunders at Tourism. About flag poles, flags and banners and. She has told me that you can do twenty. Poles, twenty flags and twenty banners. Like included in there or. Um if we wanted to order the remainder of what we need, which would be twenty inch. Flag poles, twenty inch flags and about ten banners. Which would be about fifteen hundred dollars, so the. Two options that I have is to either kind of reach out to the the businesses that are around here that might want to pitch in to buy the remainder or help out to buy. Or she said that whenever they redo their budget in March, it is a possibility that she can give me the rest. Not a guarantee. So hopefully, I mean.
Yes, for this being this exact.
Yeah, so I, the first time I'd sent it out, I showed you guys, I had two different photos and she said that this one, they said would be more clear. So it'd be best to just go with that banner. Which it'll be green and gold.
And then is this gonna be done every home?
I would like to get, we counted all of the flag poles, all of the poles and hold banners, and I'm trying to get us to get all of the, all of the ones that went up and down Main Street, I'm trying to get. And she also gave me um a flower basket, I'm gonna need help trying to figure out how or if I can even get this flower basket on our poles. And if not, um I might have to reach out to see if somebody can. Well. Then, but we could put, she's, like, I don't know that there's enough for me to put on all thirty poles, but like I think they had enough for me to at least teeter it and do fifteen. And then we could put fake flowers and then whatever, just to spruce up the post. So if anybody would like to help me see if we can get that on it.
So they're recommending to purchase one?
Yes, that's what you're saying, she, she said that like they. Uh well, it would be ten banners, but twenty, I think we counted forty. Flag poles and forty, well, I mean, obviously forty flag poles. So there would be, I would still be twenty flag poles, twenty flags and then like ten inch banners.
It's good for January. Very generous.
Yeah, I'll attempt here. I think one of the big problems is you don't have the funds to hear account credit.
Um if I'm buying street signs, then no, I will not. So it will either be up to, like in this case, I'm not asking to spend, spend the money, it will be either like the. People that own businesses, you want to like donate so that we can get more banners or we are just gonna have to. Put a, like maybe since fifteen, I have fifteen banners, I could teeter those down as well. And make it look decent until next year, and rest of it, all of them, if she, if she can put them.
So the total request is two thousand nine hundred forty dollars? No.
Well, thirty units, because that's what I said was thirty banners, so in her budget, she's got thirty banners, thirty light poles. So, yeah, that would have been three grand then.
So why don't we just put that out there like we live and ask somebody that wants you to.
I don't think it's quite that much.
It would be, well.
Cause you only have to buy ten flag poles.
No, like he's saying four thirty, it would have been twenty nine hundred, but she's buying twenty, so that would have left me with. Ten banners and I'm still looking at like twenty and doing the math on twenty five dollars a flag. Forty seven dollars a banner and twenty six dollars a flag pole, that's. Um like fourteen ninety. Is the max.
That's what.
Yeah.
Fourteen ninety, yeah.
I'm not opposed to putting the flag in, the American flag, totally.
That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, just, yeah, like the banner, flag and then even if we can't get the, like, the baskets on there, just something to, to spruce up and make us.
Just suggesting they're out there, I think, I know you were talking about putting that to the businesses, but it might be need to put it out to individuals, you know, some. Somebody might want to, especially if you could do like a little. Call us like a little clap or something on a pole and donate as mine. You know, like something like that, or in memory of.
There's some bricks for that.
To just turn into a Baptist church.
I don't limit it to businesses, but the individuals. Give a lot of feedback.
Yeah, and I mean. That's not, it's not a bad idea, mostly was just looking at the businesses, just because they are up and down Main Street, they might be more concerned with it, but. I mean, if citizens would like to as well, then. I'm not gonna tell them, no, that's.
Oh, yeah, definitely. For the fundraiser, let's, let's start there and things are getting a bit used, content. Questions, if you knew, are you okay if we'll get your phone numbers or are you just want your city?
Uh it's okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll make something.
And then the other thing that I've got is, this is the final estimate from the company that I would like to go with. Um they've been very responsive and very helpful during their question that I've had and. Been very thorough on telling me what I need to look for so that I get the right thing. But on top of the like street signs that we need to replace, I've also got like the two fifteen minute parking. I've added two handicap, I've got one for a park at your own risk for um. Hangland Ross property where everybody parks and then. Like over here where we're talking about having the free parking, having signs that is a like free parking, park at your own risk, but then also on Spring Street going out to Woodlake. Having a no parking this side, because when people are throwing parties down there, they're parking on both sides, but like Spring Street where you can't.
Okay.
So that, the court, the final estimate, and this actually comes with brackets and some channel posts that I would need. Um. But the final estimate on that was nineteen nineteen twenty nine.
Do you need a vote on this?
Uh yeah, I'd like to let you all read that.
Well, question, bring me a minute, of course. Cause mine's current in streets is roting.
Yes, but it's in her budget. I can't use that specific money.
We budgeted for, but yeah, you can't use the road anymore, it's going out for construction. New roads. Light posts. But uh it's a big transfer and forward that.
From, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I forgot to get the big chance, yeah.
Yeah.
My gosh, I'm sorry. I should have taken this much and then pretty.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion. All those in favor?
Quick question, is this just a mafia?
It is, I told her, I actually, it's in the email, I asked her to fix the established date to what we discussed is the correct date, so she said, yes, it could be correct. It's eighteen thirty five or thirty.
The easy way to remember is one twenty four thirty four, so one. Plus two thirty four thirty four times. Sorry, I'm that mixed. It's one twenty four thirty. January twenty fourth.
Yeah, but the answer to your question is, yes, she said that they have.
Okay. All right, gotta prove, anything else?
I was saying that it.
We did.
Okay, it was my favorite.
It's down.
Yeah.
Oh, and also I wanted to say too, because I'd reached out to J R, that Jeff Thompson sign I got fixed and um I've talked to. Yeah, he's supposed to come out Friday and fix that bush at the corner of the MS as well, so.
Um I'll give you two hundred and fifty for this. And uh Albert, can I take this? Obviously, it was on Facebook.
Okay, thanks.
The question. Something she said to maybe think about situation last year, we assume we have money in the budget for distribution, if we follow the line, right? That was one thing you all took out, too.
Famers?
It's not, we're not voting.
Please vote for the street signs.
This is for the street signs.
Oh, we're never, I was not, I was voting for the banners, I wanted banners.
Got you, to the businesses and personal, we've seen. They have to donate to the uh things and I have to order. I know where I'm going, but you.
That's what science is.
I mean, we kinda have to do the street signs.
And that's why I heard you can push it, meaning. X name. If that's for that, then can I put a stain or number on it, just because?
Which one?
Uh. He just said, yes, it's. Which I was confused about which one to vote on.
Yeah.
Consensus?
Three one.
So it changed.
No, I was just like, since. Uh for the.
We need to have somebody else second it again, or no, we're good.
Did anybody else have any, this understanding about like the motion?
No, I was.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, well.
Just. She does.
Keep it on this end.
He seconded it, didn't you?
Yes.
I'll second it. I can second it to go vote.
He seconded it, but he buried the incident.
It's kind of suspicious, it's good.
Are we good now? Yeah. Econ development?
Um. Did you all, the attorneys get the, the letter stating about? Joe, did you all get the letter about stating about going towards the revenue cabinet, setting up dates?
Yes.
Okay, and did you see it? Is what I'm asking.
The revenue cabinet?
Yeah, we've asked to.
We talked about the revenue division.
Yes, yes.
The George Scott County.
Yes. Just, I just want to make sure that you guys have both got it, and if we haven't made a date, we're not voting on it, we're just gonna go at a meeting. Even see if they can be able to begin uh.
Sure.
Jennifer, I asked Jennifer to go. Because she's on the administration side of things.
You know, Cody, you, you think you can either one of us there or you guys?
Uh they, I I guarantee you, they're gonna ask for one of you. It doesn't matter who comes, um because. Long story short, it's, it's a meeting, we'll have to come back and talk about it, see what the councils.
Right.
Quest is, so um I think what what they're concerned is maybe the the audit side of things, if we can do certain things or whatever, I think it should be in the best interest. That's for us to have attorney.
Okay.
Does anybody have noticed that?
Is this for the, to do your business, like some merger on you?
Right.
Nice.
Yes, this is for that, but um they, I had talked to Scott Hall and there's a, they, I guess it wrote us back today, didn't you?
You did it?
Yeah.
You read this.
Yeah, I I read it, but I didn't print it off. Um basically, we're just going to set up a formal meeting to meet with them. Once he passes it, pass Joe, Pat and all the managers, everybody's on the board.
Well, and remind us of. When you go to that website now, it's got two separate, you have George County and Scott County, right?
Yeah, we.
Yeah, it'd be hard to put it up, so I mean.
Right, it's, it, it's uh. I went to the fiscal board meeting and they gave a big presentation about how. Uh money, much money they have, revenue through their department and everything, it's, it's just growing, I think it was like seven, six million dollars or something. It is crazy. Um. Now, this doesn't fix all problems. Uh people still have to pay it.
They still.
But if uh they don't pay it, then they can get hit taxes, you know, the previous.
Yeah, is that uh logistic wise, is that? The only spot you can be able to pay?
Yes, same, what will happen is, that's kind of what we gotta hash out. How are we gonna go about doing it? How does the board just say that we can do it? If we can legally do what we need to do. Um it, obviously Georgetown, Scott County does it, so it's probably, we're probably not gonna be able to adopt it, maybe something that they do or. I don't know, it's kind of a lot of masking attorney and that's kind of, you got all that. I don't know. It's kind of a lot of asking attorney and that's kind of, you all have realized that we'll have to pay the attorney to be there, but I'm kind of asking. You know, in the best interest of the city, I think that we probably should have somebody represent us.
And that's also one of the reasons why I'm after the same people that built their website. Because they can say that something as I heard the same lines.
One of the biggest problems that I see is like you said, you can go Scott County or Georgetown. Problem is, is a lot of people buy licenses. They buy them in Georgia, they buy them. I think Scott County covers us.
Maybe when y'all talk to them, it's selling point, you admire it, send us to them, but if you can get all four cities involved. One's about it, gets it all, which because everybody thinks they're getting anywhere, so go back.
But that. Well, we're gonna ash some things out and. I don't know when that meeting is. I can't tell you. He just wrote us back today and he's like, he has to go in front of uh Joe Patton and all of them too. Uh, the only other thing I got is um yeah. Businesses doing big things up the road here and um they have paid their business license now. So I don't know when they're opening, but. It's I, I'm getting excited. Um, I do know that they paid their ABC license and they have paid their business license. So. And there's a sign, there's two signs and they put patio out.
Yeah, these housing building specs are about that. Where, I'm sorry, um. Yeah, right, that that across the tree, right next door.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I don't, I'm not on the code enforcement side, I don't like that.
And maybe before anything happens, if it's not approved and needs to be approved, we should ask code enforcement to get some air.
Sure, I don't know why we do that now. I can. Play into that through the last three meetings that since we've given out business license without even doing any homework, that's why we would do them any different.
But because of safety, you're gonna have people drinking, they're consuming alcohol, it needs to be safe when we come in our building. That's.
I was just putting my point, I have asked.
I have a question you may or may not know and like I'm sorry it struck to that you. But like, not sorry, is that, when the Georgetown, Scott County revenue. Does give out business licenses, do they take on that responsibility of checking out all those things?
Yes.
They do, okay.
For what I understand. They also, they also have an enforcer that runs around there. That's his full-time job.
Okay.
Um, and it's not like they're gonna take a percentage or anything from us. It's, they're just gonna collect this and I don't know if they're gonna send us a check once a month. I think, well, actually I asked him that. He said monthly, didn't he? Weekly, I can't remember. There's a lot of things we need to ask out, but just know that it's in the works. I am talking with him. We may not take it, we may take it. I don't know. Just know that um me and me and Jennifer are gonna go meet. On that. Um, also, back to the businesses, um we are slowly getting. Businesses pay at a alarming rate. Seems about like one feet, maybe two, I don't know. I'm trying to fix. One way that I'm trying to fix it, the other night I don't really have anything else. Does anybody have anything to make?
Did you have something to bring up about the free parking?
Oh, well. We we might as well wait, it's on agenda. Yes.
I mean, if you want to.
Uh, y'all, I mean, we. No, I think we need to vote on it. That's all I have right now. Hopefully we can get this part one to resolve.
I, we got next approval of July finances.
Is that the check you tell them?
Yeah.
That's the same. And we paid more space.
You paid what?
World play. World pay. Yeah.
About. And.
Um, since I said it brings stuff, I've got. That fits the question too.
But I'm just saying, we we we've got a veritable on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we paid your money.
Everybody done with the one time?
You like this blood? You have a little bit of hair? It's it's fine. We just now paid for our name plates.
No, I just now turned it. For Ms. Brown. I drove and got it. So. When Chief Tackett gave this to the GIM last month, the fire breaks, I don't see them paid yet.
That'll be in August. It'll show.
He gave him just for that a quarter a month ago.
That's on me, sir.
Oh, okay, I didn't know we were holding her for some reason. No, no boundary, okay, okay. We'll give it to you. That's your bread running right there.
Uh, you you were on it.
Yeah, so I was talking to her. About when are we gonna make the one two and thank you. And she.
I don't wanna be the only one in that conversation or making that decision, so I don't know if if. If we have two of us who are are willing to.
I mean, I.
Going down that road.
I'm, yeah, I'm willing to go because I've talked to the three of them so far and one people have, it's not the winner.
No, I'm gonna have to agree.
So the the one that I like the most personally, I mean, probably just because I hear some pre-views, just that people.
One, yeah, can't sort of say the names. The two we got that look good, Central Bank and People's Bank.
People's Bank, they answer any little sign, they govern it.
Yeah. So maybe we can get some information from. Or if he's been talking to.
I've got a couple of questions I can send you to give me.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Actually, I'll call and see if I can figure some more and give you the whole package down, but mine's all together now, but.
Okay, that'd be good. And he would, he's mentioned Pizza Bank too, they have a specific. Person that does like government.
The government.
Yeah. Which maybe.
And one of the things that we all know with the police, you know, you know, all those charges where we had thirteen accounts and they were charged us for like. It's definitely free, but then charged for the rest and then there are charges for the credit cards that the fire and police use.
Yeah.
When they came, they, and they, matter of fact, they called their their chief executive officer for, and he said, no, we will not be charging the city. And I explained to him like Ken said, or she said, you said, for nonprofit, why are we charging fees? Why are you getting charged fees?
That's what many folks said is we would never charge a fee for a nonprofit.
I mean, it's not a lot, but it's probably a few hundred dollars for them, but.
I mean, it's every, listen, I think we've learned lately, every level of awareness, definitely. So maybe if we can get this stuff next, my next meeting, we can.
Okay.
Have another conversation on on moving forward with one of them.
Yes.
Can we all look at something on seven thirty, twenty twenty-five, check one seventeen to Stephen Paul. Going seventeen thirty. Spring a hundred fifty dollars.
Seven thirty.
Yes, seventy thirty. This uh this check was sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, one thing I would like to just point out, what is the food shoot?
Uh, that's the the dog. We've got the city's, Caleb was here, we've had a dog. Uh, cause it's in our orders, you have to clean up by your dogs if they waste out, city park. Um, so he takes it out because none of us has stepped up and volunteered to go. Did the food pay me on it?
One thing that concerns me is we have, what is our spending gap as a. Commissioner.
Spending gap?
Yeah, so we can do something that's a thousand dollars and not have to get a blowbomb, right? Um, what concerns me is this is sixteen hundred dollars. I think Steph Peter probably talked about doing all this, this brand clean, chemicals seventy-five dollars, form drain that he just come here and talked about that he cleans fifty dollars. Sidewalks, chemicals, yard, fifty dollars, grass is thirty. I I personally, I didn't know about any of this. Just is concerning. Well, I'm not saying anything. I'm just worried about how does that hit on our budget? Cause I don't remember ever.
It's almost like.
Almost fifteen thousand.
But I would like to see where we're at. I mean, it's. There's what we have to pay now versus what is in his contract.
It makes sense to see that.
Yeah, cause it's, yeah. Like.
So I have, I have no problem. I mean, if this is, if we sign up and open for that, I mean, that should be then would be advice. As long as we're aware of it. We obviously did the work.
And the question, oh, it's concerning on that.
Is the, going forward is done, um we shouldn't develop a thing on any more rare.
I think once you gave him that final question, he was like, okay, done. Send them restart this to his name on.
Just since you asked, if he. On public works on item, we only had mowing for fourteen time.
Fourteen thousand five hundred. This year, just.
This year, yeah. But there was a lot of stuff involved.
Yeah, I mean, one thing on there is I don't think we even considered above that as training, we're not, we won't load it two hundred dollars like.
Well, no, we did certain, we took it out of budget, so I didn't.
We didn't consider that? I don't, I don't remember that.
Cause it was like two.
Yeah, we did it. It was just an alarming check to me compared to the rest of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That does pay for two weeks, if that helps.
For, and like somebody said down there, maybe we should redo his contract, because the contract doesn't say anything about. For us to talk that, just to mow it seventeen or thirty miles a year or something like that, so maybe just redo the contract, I can do that, so. There's the thing to be coming to those in full. Also, the. Revisit his contract and just get it all to date.
Did we uh also when we were talking about budget, did we claim to keep three quarter fires going? Uh, we got charged through, so.
We do have three on front.
Right, we do.
And then we decided that we were gonna keep the two down there for.
Oh, so you're gonna keep?
But we don't really need to, we could probably go down the one. But when you get into like uh Buffalo venues and stuff like that, you know, I want to.
Um, I see that we paid Miss Melissa Fair on here too, we can finally get her to torture her, like we've discussed, she started in the past. Um, for the, for the budget.
Mom, you could be asking just to email us all the past year being done, that we said, I can't remember.
I haven't seen it, that's why I'm asking. Have you seen it?
Probably she has. From when she was on, yeah.
Well, I'm not like. The rea, what what uh her recommendations are.
Oh, um, not for the past two years, I don't think, um. You're talking about the audit report where it has at the end, checking what you suggest. Um, I'll look and see if I do have an electronic copy. I'll send you, but I don't think I have the past two years that were not. Kind of be good to stay on.
She doesn't have a contract, right?
Not now, that was the last payment for the last year before.
I was just wondering, cause that would be the final payment, would be like the recommendations, right?
Oh, when she didn't, when she doesn't audit?
Well, no, like recommendations, like when when she does her budget, she says every year she turns in at the end of the year, she actually turns it into the DLB or whatever it is.
Yeah, that's on her audit.
Right, but we usually get copies of that.
Yeah, they shouldn't send me somewhere, but she gives a dog commissioners and.
I have, have you, you got one?
I don't think so, not not the past two years. We don't have one for this year yet.
Okay, that's what I'm asking this year.
This year we have on it. I think she said late August.
Okay. I just didn't order it.
Thank you, right. Actually, close out. Actually, it's.
We got onto one finance.
I guess. I'm also to the July finances.
Yes, I can. All those in favor? The show is replacing to. Close City Hall on August twenty-eight, twenty-nine. You go down here or September fifth.
I, we don't need all of those, you just need one of those days.
Okay.
If we do need more, we'll definitely let you know, but.
The goal is for our Felicity to come down here and help with a few things. How's everybody feeling?
Oh, well, let's be big. Powerfully.
That's what she's, she remembered that, she didn't say, if we kept her past the contract, she would. Charges commensurately on it, which. Account, we're good. I have a question and maybe it's a tough question to ask for you. It's gonna be for all day.
Yeah, and I don't know if she's wanting to maybe, I don't know if she's trying to set up things for the audit or if she's wanting to go ahead and do it and do several things. That they.
So is this for training or is this for her, for?
Well, she definitely, there's gonna be a lot of things that she's definitely not showing. I just don't know if she hasn't planned. Do the audit, and I would think she would have said that specifically if that was.
So, um, Commissioner Brown and I were down here yesterday and um. Back when you go, we were talking about budget, I kept sending a big long list of things I wanted to remember. On one of them, it says, um. Um, I charter. What's it called? Charter accounts, yeah. And what it is, when you set up QuickBooks, it has like. Fire, gas, fire, water, police, electric. It has line items, like we spent the time to line it. Well, after we were talking over here and. Say thank you, you say thank you. But she uh she went and showed Michelle some things and we found out we don't have the ability to do a charter QuickBooks because.
We don't have that version.
And and it goes back to like we dealt with the other things, Microsoft Teams, you want to get some talk about it, you know, I had to. Buy the true version of Microsoft Teams instead of the home version, and that's what we have the basic version over there that won't do budget, won't do like.
We also have like thirty-nine employees on there.
Yes, that's the problem. You like explaining that word? Cause you target people.
Yeah, yeah. You do have a chart of accounts, you just can't input a budget to get a budget versus actual. But it's the version that you got.
Uh, yeah, well, I mean, cause they were saying that and and what we figured out yesterday was that if we. Get what we're looking for, it would be forty dollars more a month, but I reached out to QuickBooks. Both the desktop and the online version, and they told me that for all the employees that are listed, you can. Switch them to inactive and back as many times as you need. So like the fire department having, you you have all of your people that. Go to fault, right? If you have some that aren't showing up for that month, we could mark them as inactive, so we're not paying for people that didn't go anywhere.
Right.
But then the ones that did, they're marked active and then that would help save money.
And Megan's done the math on this. You want to throw it out there?
Like twenty-four hundred dollars difference.
Yeah.
It would save us about twenty-four hundred dollars.
And here's where it deserves your solages. You just blow your sign. Here's where I'm certain, that's what, yeah, we should transfer. Here's where I'm certain, that's what, yeah, we should transfer it over. My apologies, I told you all about the, actually certain people and we were getting charged for it, but I never put it, like she didn't find out. We don't have to have money here. I mean, and that would save us, we done nothing beginning, to take off the ones that aren't gonna have.
Goodness, it's easy fix, but I kinda feel like we probably need another software too. Just to make it.
What's the other software? It's, it's, it's QuickBooks, it's just go up to another.
But just, like, combine the better plan, so we, right now, we're at the base plan, and with that, we don't have the ability to, like, when you're looking at. Your budget and your line items and stuff, that it gives you a better. Vision, kinda like what you were saying, it's like, you're, where you started, it's what you've spent, this is how much left. Um, we don't currently have that ability, so. Like upgrading to the one that would be forty more dollars a month would give us that ability.
So, not, not this, cause this is what I did, like such bridge, but it literally will print reports like this. And it can literally track, you know, as your budget knows in that category, you have this much, it can track what you've spent, what you have remaining.
As opposed to what we're looking at now.
A bunch of, a bunch of letters on paper.
Yeah, it, it, that's exactly what it was.
And it tells us something.
Tom, is your website doing that?
Uh, yes, sir.
Anyways, in consideration, with Mr. Giles has sent us time to watch the video.
I have, and I've done a lot of research on it.
Hey, how do you do it?
I don't like it. Personally.
I haven't dug into it as much as he has.
Maybe I was saying, I watched the video and I like the ideas of it, it's just more or less, I, I would. If we were to try to, even, I guess, with the idea of switching, I would like to talk to him to see if there's questions that could be answered. Maybe, uh, I mean, cause I, I like the icons and stuff that you can click on and the fact that there, you could have everything in once. But, I'm just worried, too good to be true means, too good to be true.
And here's a couple things I'm not.
What's that found ring?
Couple of things I have issue with it, one. If we do all that, it's great, it's a great package, but as a government, we're putting all that into programs that we really aren't managing, we can manage and click on things, but versus a QuickBook is under our security, our care, our computers. And we know, for the fancy things. This one I already said today, there was somebody that really upset me, I went and watched it, and I never put my identifiers in there. And now I'm getting spam from Udu, so they hijacked. Some way, my email to now send emails to my website, and they're sending me spam. Think about if we linked it to some, somebody goes and makes a payment, they start getting four thousand and spams from Udu. And they're gonna be freaking out, well, how did the person get that, or, you know, that's up to city, I look at my, my email, my information. Did you get, somebody, somebody said they got some too.
I did.
You got one too? Which it might be a simple fix, you might say we can figure out how to, how to happen, but, that scares, like you said.
I think that maybe Odu's not the. The fix for it, but I think that we need to.
There needs to be a match.
There needs to be a fix.
Well, and I'm hoping too, though, I mean, cause even since that's not gonna be an immediate thing, if we upgrade the, the QuickBooks that we've got right now, because we need to start tracking. Like we've been talking about since possible, I mean, you could always switch in the future, if we wanted to go with Odu, but this. This way we can at least start tracking, and if we upgrade, we can actually see what all we could possibly be doing, since we would be paying for, for their.
Yeah, but they got really only those whistles on the desktop.
And that's what we use.
Yeah.
The desktop basically has everything that's a week.
No, it doesn't, a lot of things you can pick on the desktop. The newer things, uh, if you're on, you can look it up, you, look it up, you're sometimes, I don't know about it, but there's a lot of things you can complain about, about it. Um, well, in, kind of like complaining, you know, I see CPA on here, one thing everybody do. Call your CPA if you have one, or call a CPA, and say, if we hired you, would you rather use QuickBooks or Udu? Yeah, you can say, what's Udu? And they know QuickBooks, they know how to import it, QuickBooks, Melissa does it off-site, that's why we have an extra log, she can do it from her home in North Kentucky. So that might cut costs, cut costs on CPA, if they don't have to physically come down here, we know QuickBooks works, it saves us pure. We have some things to look into, but.
QuickBooks or Quick and Internet, that too.
Quick and, yeah.
If I had to pick between the two, I'd go QuickBooks.
When I evolved today, it's honestly, uh, they had to transfer me between. The, your desktop version and your online version, I had to talk to two different people to confirm about the, like, making somebody inactive and active. Like, I guess, it's like, it's the same stuff.
So back to the closing, are we, is it, are we?
How many times are we going to close this? That's gross.
But the only thing, I'll throw one more thing out there with the QuickBooks. Uh, definitely, I think we should upgrade it to the budget, it's gotta be in there. Um, but I also, like I said a few weeks ago, we should look at, get payroll out of it, because. Yeah, because payroll. We should not pay as much as we do for payroll.
I'm not against that.
Which is your ten dollars a month per person.
I'm not, that was where most of our money, that is honestly where most of the money goes for QuickBooks.
Well, then let's, okay, well, we can find a remedy for that, most likely.
If we do, can we make sure it's, it's more like QuickBooks and like the, um, payroll somewhere they have that. It'll compute taxes and things, they, uh, it's to make sure.
What do you?
Uh, your department. Uh, but, uh, you can use pretty much any good software company out there, they check.
With heartling is actually pretty time management, make sure you're getting it on time, because they're gonna do as quick as you get it there, right? And then they can be related commission to that and stuff like that, you know? Like when we get paid, you know, forty dollars a week, you can do it that way, it would be, it's like.
Since we've mentioned this, did you have, like, your paid time off and stuff like that too?
Since we mentioned the dreaded word payroll, um. I told you I was gonna invite back when I got it, and missed a budget, and I never did ask KLC coming, it got so messy, but I, I do plan to invite him to come down and talk to you all. But I'm still just kinda. Kinda, kinda disconcerted the fact that, you know, we go to KLC for, to review our police department, they make decisions, we do it. They insure us, they tell us all these things we need to do to run our government, these guys have been in municipal law, probably combined. Probably back to thirty Marshall, I mean. But we refuse to, when three lawyers up there said, start doing your volunteers, through. Not through ten-nine-nine, do it the other way, refusing to listen to that, and that just, that just baffles me, we listen about everything else, but when it comes to that, we don't do that. So I'd like to invite them coming up to talk to you all, like, explain, just because I feel like. I don't want to put city at risk for anything down there. You know, I mean, the whole thing with the clerk and the pensions, and that cost us forty-five thousand dollars. I don't wanna get fined.
And you wanna take care of that, you wanna, you could spend one for time to come down and talk to us?
At the next meeting, a new business service.
I don't think, I don't need that.
I'm gonna get long again. Okay, yeah, I'm like, I'll see who he is on schedule for the next two minutes, thanks, Rob.
The, the next meeting, can we also, if everybody is okay with it, is. I think we need to go ahead and upgrade this, uh, the QuickBooks. Like, I, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, and find the, the better version of it to, to be able to do the budget stuff too. If you want to, and I was gonna say, if anybody else knows of any other payroll, whatever. Let's see if we can get that information together, or, or whatever, have it, well, to have at the next meeting. So that we can, maybe hopefully quickly find an investigation on something. Yes, so, let's go back to that. Oh, all in favor? Yes, to upgrade it, right, yes, for Melissa in closing. I can always talk to her, but her dates that she gave me are after the next meeting. I can always talk to her, have her call you, to get more details before you. And then, and then we can talk about it next meeting?
Yeah. I don't think she'd have a phone with her.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, do you wanna, um. We got our Heart Association of PBA. So. The Heart Association, Bill stopped in one day and talked to me, he's only put you showing you there, there's only. We're first, it's not on. And he sent me an email, and he said he really wanted to be here tonight to talk to you, Raz. Um, and in the class, we have always donated to him, I think, I feel like that's a good cause. And this is Bill Parker, asking us to donate, it's. For those who aren't seeing this, we donated three hundred dollars, yes, live sticker.
Uh, and it looks like I can attend via Zoom, which might be the better option, it's only for an hour. But it's something the PBA always does, with everybody who counts, and to make sure everybody's on the same page.
On the same page.
Like I say, I'll just do this, I feel like it's me being. Newer, I feel like it would be good for me to just have that refresher again, to make sure this man has been. Giving you opportunity to ask questions, if anything, but.
So, a question, um, since it's not on the header, was this email addressed to Stand Ground City Commission? It says hello all, I'm only asking because if it is, then I'd probably log in too, just so I get more knowledge on what, what it's about.
I think it's on the back, where it is on this one. PBA.
About property tax. It's just a, an overall review that they do every year to make sure everybody's on the same page for property tax process. That meeting is October twenty-second.
It's kind of like the bills.
That's because ours is not sitting in the news, for whatever reason.
You have to be trying to be fine.
So that's sure.
I guess two, uh, first thing, first, because of hard virtue. Um, so we give anything to anybody else since the first few, I mean.
Um, did we do the, we didn't, we do last stock, something like?
Yes. You might remember it was five hundred.
That was actually, yeah, July.
And it checks. Um, just so we're staying on the game, um, we budgeted. We request two thousand dollars.
I wanna say that the last one was five hundred. Was it?
Yeah, it was, I think so, yeah. He stuck in use or something like that, like, well, there's.
I mean, we donated three hundred last year, we wanted to stay the same.
Yeah, second investment, we last stock, we gave. Down to July first, five hundred dollars.
Five hundred.
Can I have an opinion, can we like, go walk instead of giving money? You know, like, I volunteer to walk and make a walk. We not show up and do that, send money?
He didn't ask you to walk.
I volunteer, and like, I understand.
I don't think you would mind doing either or both. I'm okay with us donating, um, but I'm also okay with us having a team if it, if he.
I'm just saying, like, we're, I don't know that, when's the last time we had somebody like, feet on the ground? At the event that we're donating to, I don't know about it, so, can we put our money where our mouth is? What's the date?
Right here, it is, registration's at nine AM on September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, it's at. Sabre.
Sign me up.
If you're gonna go, I don't.
I'll look at, what time was it? I just know that that's the meet the partners. So then that's their clinic day, what, what time is it on that day?
Uh, register at nine AM, then you start.
And then when is the walk?
Uh, start passing out at nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Passing out.
Um, yeah, I'm kind of a jumper too, I'm, I do like, I love the team, but I do like the donating, um, does everybody know Bill?
I will, I don't, I don't know him, I know who he is.
So some backstory on his connection to Stand Ground, he always tries to go up Buffalo Days, he always tries to do his heart walks, he became. Three years ago, and set up blood drives and fire station for four times, little B Stand Ground, got the blood.
He sends every single dispatcher a Christmas card. He's a very, he's a very, very nice guy.
He is.
Um, okay.
We won't say his son. Now, he has good son.
So, does anybody wanna make a motion? For the heart.
They will.
There you go.
What's it coming out of?
Uh, the, uh, the donations. We need requests, that's what we're calling it, yeah, and we have two thousand minus the, whatever that is.
There's still fifteen hundred. Yeah, but we're not even, two months in there either.
I mean, do you wanna just keep it the same as we did last year, be three hundred?
Yeah, yes, three hundred people is, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we donate to three hundred dollars to the American Heart Association. All those in favor? Oh, yeah, back to the, back to the Michelle.
No, we're, we've already just served.
You know what? Can you put an abstain on my vote? Thank you.
Okay. Savings? So, savings typically, I know. Can't remember if it's a discussion last year or not, but I know everything that we pulled out of savings, where you put back in there, so I just wanted, if there's a thousand dollars in there in the world. Want back in.
Yeah, and we kinda talked about it, but you make it be nice to like, figure out our, our known debts each month, and transfer that. Before the month starts into those accounts, you know, into fire, into whatever. Into general fund, of savings, and not have everything one big pile.
That makes sense. Well, I've been trying to get back to that with the five thousand dollar transactions. Um, but I can definitely be precise with that.
Yeah, like if, if police is gonna be the next month, forty-eight hundred dollars and fifty cents, and transfer forty-nine hundred over. That will stay in right there.
Now, I know this was last year, but payroll was about, we would transfer about twenty thousand, and that would last almost a month. So, we ought to be a little. So I should be able to calculate what he and I get paid now, get pretty much.
The only caveat would be when we know we're getting ready to get our quarterly, when they can put an extra three, four thousand in there, so they can get. The only caveat would be when we know we're getting ready to get our quarterly, wanting to put an extra three or four thousand in there so they can get paid.
Okay. Um. Hands on the printers and Brittany Bowes and credit card machine.
Yes. So we remember. When we passed it, I said, I wouldn't go do it until we had the money. So we have the money now. Um, here's two things. So. The stamp thing is, can get rid of, here's a printer that, um. Is it Sam's? It's one of those Ecos. I think Cody had mentioned, we all look at the Ecos. I did, Ecos are great. We actually bought one because they work pretty good. Thank you, Cody. Cause our HP is horrible. Um. Yeah, HPR, if you know what they have a thing when you buy a cartridge, you cannot buy a competitor's cartridge because it would kick it out and refuse to use it. This, we're just ordering tons of heat. And putting it back in, refilling. Um, that one is for EGR. Plus, this is something to talk about in the segment about the credit card machines. I said everything that I had money to.
Do we even need a second one? I mean, I know it's got. One over there, but it doesn't. That was. That's one I can't. Like, I can, but.
Front brand back and, um.
Honestly, I have friends that information and posts.
And it would be absolutely incredible, this is not. Third day, I could stand and email it to the department.
So the printer has the, um, like seventeen, I think it was seventeen per minute light. Um, it does have you can turn off colored black printing, um, does have Wi-Fi on, so that'd be a thing too. Cause we talked one time about how. It'd be nice if we came as commissioners, we worked something that day, hold up something, we could come in, print it from our phone. Cause we didn't remember to send it to Michelle on time. And we know for sure who can cancel. My, 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 last thing I was gonna ask is that I pass it on to Zach and Joe, just to go check. Um, what's our time as a credit card contract we have and the, um. Big contract we have for the printer, I read through it and saw we could cancel, but please, I'm gonna send you all the copies, double check before we do. Uh, but in the end, we also talked about, buddy, you know, if they charge us, you know, three hundred dollars, we're paying you. Uh, golly, man, I'm. Yeah, we didn't include the budget because we were scared by how much it costs to do that printer and do that card stand. Um. But now it's amazing, if they can look at the contract, we can order through the credit cards, it's under the value that she can order. And.
And you have talked to. Brittany Bowes and audience. About canceling those. Rose and Toshiba. Yes.
Yes.
And they said good, not Toshiba?
So. Just trying to get my story straight with the two of them. I'm getting them both mixed up. Um. So for the Toshiba, all I have to do is send her. An email. And we have to give them thirty days notice. So essentially I'll have service through October three with the print. Um, Pitt and Bowes. There's a case number. Open on, they were supposed to send me numbers and they haven't yet, so I'll follow up with that. Just to see what the cost is and the. Did you want to be the best time?
Rob Jones and I.
So I'm understanding, like, I'm just saying, if we go with this, what is doing with the other ones? Are they just gonna keep the key and laying or?
We have to keep them and, uh. Or possibly, so they'll put them down in the building.
We can't serve, but that one's rented, right?
Yeah.
That's leased or whatever, so we have to have it. We can, we can those over there on the shelf that does.
And maybe we can get on this before we send it to Larry Sal, we can put our crap back there.
Yeah, that's all I'm playing around there. So I guess the, I guess the motion I would make is, heard Joe been reviewing it and saying for good, I would like to have her cancel it and order the other one in. But here's the thing, I like the timing, since they're saying we have another month, and you said we have a month, to have it in here installed on that covers. Yeah.
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 And, and this is for the, the printer?
Yes.
Brittany Bowes?
Yes.
Which we're not replacing. We're just getting rid of. And then the credit card machine.
Yes, and the credit card machine. Since we don't have anything set up, that's why I print out what's query is, because we said we need to do something, because we're. We're paying more than these fees on the credit card teams. He tried to say like, I swear. That's just the quickest to get in and see this, and we can, we can list in there a directory, you know, like when we go into a store and they've got pop and hamburgers, we could list, you know. The different business licenses, we can list the different things people have to pay, you know, or others for taxes, you know. And then we would give a printout at the end to say where's for for that person. Where it's where it is. Good for you to do that up. That's my thought, and there, please, uh, it's lady, they're on that thing right there. Yeah, yes, and she'll be over by stairs. Oh, yeah. So the stamp machine is a machine, I'm ugly, that could do, wait, Stanshaw said, we talked in budget meetings, we were. I think we'd be more happy if we go into post office and buy our little stamps versus.
I even talked to Stacy about it briefly and I can't remember what she said, that a book costs, but it's like I told her, it's a lot more than I send out and the. The rental, but you just use it and then it automatically sends me any good stuff, so that's another cost. And she goes, oh, yeah.
If you have a month, you don't mail anything, we're not still getting charged monthly fee, it was like we got extra stamps.
Yeah, you wanna make that motion?
Can I put all three together? Cancel it.
Phrase it. You.
That's sort of Michelle and.
Motion to cancel the printer. And replace it. To cancel the Brittany Bowes machine as well as the credit card machine.
And the credit card machine to replace the square.
And replace the square.
As long as, as well, as Joe does not. As long as Joe doesn't say that we get ten dollars.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah. Contention upon the attorney's improvement as canceled. We'd like to. So.
We don't like judging the city tax rate.
We have to spam this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send you down.
Yeah. Okay, Dan, is that your motion?
Yes. So it's, it's get rid of printer, replace it with a printer, get rid of stamps altogether and get rid of the card readers and subscriptions. I guess we say that.
Brittany Bowes.
Brittany Bowes, yeah, yeah.
And I get rid of stamps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're getting rid of the card reader and all the subscriptions that go with it.
Yes. Let me ask him about this.
We're all paid.
We're paid. So that's what I was gonna ask, since we have like three or four contracts that we put in there, cancel all subscriptions to the. Yeah, I mean, that's. Cancel all subscriptions to the. Credit cards. Yeah, into the.
How'd you get three whole ones in?
I will not tell.
We've been here forever.
And Stacy like you passing that?
Our paper here's to cut three whole ones.
You got that? Yes. I was second. I think so. I'll put it second first. Dale was?
By October?
Yeah. Actually sooner, I, I, I would, I would actually say get square bond right away.
Yeah. Yes.
If there's any, and if it's truly, we take the last month, we don't mind gift, right? Say, take, I'll take that.
I, I mean. Heart, if you're gonna look at it, there is a, that was, you're gonna get pretty good.
Another one. Is there a contract called Square? I think so.
I mean, you, they get paid.
And before they process it through the machine, they take their money out right there. When it's in. Are you gonna buy a better deal? Yes, uh, I'm gonna come down and give her the older vision, I'm prepared.
Baby.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Property tax reform?
Oh, okay.
So, uh. This is the ordinance to set the city that they don't. Sent you all an email. Days ago to explain and. They, you know, first of all. We had to wait until we received from Scott County PBA, assessed value property and estate. Have that, and that allowed me to plug numbers into a. There's a parking vote the government has. And under state law, the city's revenues, most the same, stays the same. Uh, that is probably major law, that means. Uh, the law does allow cities to actually increase revenue by up to four percent. Try to increase revenue any higher and you could have a public referendum, but. So, uh. Some of the material I sent you is a list of how the, uh. Tax rates changed over the past five years and how the. I did this calculation. And the goal being to calculate what the rate needs to be, keep the revenue the same, even though the value of property has gone up. We can exclude what's called new property and that's developed, that's worth. So the city does get the benefit of additional revenue because of that growth. But in running the calculation, in order to receive the same revenue as last year. The rate would go down from thirteen point nine, uh, cents per hundred dollars of assessed value to just thirteen point. I agree. I'm sorry, thirteen point three nine. Last year's rate down to thirteen point three oh, which gets the same revenue. But the city, if you get the four percent increase in revenue. And go with the rate of thirteen point, uh, five cents. Yeah. That's per hundred dollars, right? Per hundred dollars, correct. So typically you, you do want to intervene that four percent increase. In part to get as much revenue as possible this year, but also it gives you a higher plat- platform. For future. That's, we see it this year, we see it future. Right, you see it a little bit this year. It'd be a four percent increase in revenue, but then next year you can add, you can. Increase that amount by one.
Of course, you, you've seen the history. Uh, in the making when we were trying to do the budget.
Yeah.
This year. That we're operating. Stealth in. So. I don't think we do the four percent.
What would that put us at?
It's probably thirteen percentage. Thirteen point five, thirteen four hundred.
Well, it's, yeah, not only a percentage, Cody, it's thirteen point five cents per hundred dollars.
So last year was thirteen point nine, right?
Thirteen point nine.
Correct. So it's actually going down.
The rate is lower, but because the assessed value of property on average in the city's, uh, to increase revenue by four percent.
So if we put the record in, um, if that fails, which I expect it would, we would automatically go back to the max, right? It said in there, but.
No, I, I don't know what we have.
Yeah, no, we, we never, and that's the problem, we stay with. It's nineteen eight.
But that's why you take the four percent increase each year. That's where it comes down to.
When is the best time it gives you to do it? At the beginning of each year?
We have to, we have to do it right now.
Well, I'm saying, okay, you do it same time every year or?
If we recamp, uh, we have to wait till the, you know, the PBA gets the potential to this. And then we want to get the tax bills out in a month or so, so it's this with, uh. This time of year.
This app will be interesting.
Well, it's our first reading of the ordinance. Now I brought one. And I'm not a planner, but I'll get this worked so we can really see the policy.
Yeah, and do a first reading. Four percent less, right?
This is a four percent increase in revenue.
What do we do last year? Say four percent. Well, we've all read it. But we're already, so. Yeah, they're really. So I, I agree, Cam, we can do the maximum we can. The longer we're here, try and get less, but also just to point out, even, but. Two thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars for the PBA, I would love what they, what they charged last year. They charged me three thousand one hundred forty-two, so.
But it's based on the assessed value.
Yeah.
The assessed value is down. It's fifty-eight ninety dollars.
Yeah.
You know, uh, six years ago, it was only thirty-six. Some of that's broke, and you got some of this. I honestly, I mean, it is a.
It's all bad.
Yeah, I know. So there is that.
I think we're all good.
Yes.
Good, okay, and this is. An ordinance relating to that, uh, taxes, be it named by the city's Stand Ground, section twelve, section one, to three thousand twenty-five tax rate for all real property. Located within city limits of Stand Ground, section shall be thirteen point five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Section two, two thousand twenty-six, tax rate for all personal property located within city limits of Stand Ground, shall be thirteen point five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Section three, the two thousand twenty-six tax rate for vehicles and water products within city limits of Stand Ground. Shall be forty cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Section four, this will be, I would kind of factor it all capacity. And that is appropriate. Thank you. Thank you. Watch out, get out there.
Okay.
This will. Have a long talk. Instead of the future, some way.
All right, we're down to unfinished business. We've been talking about art piece for. You're getting and closing. We got on your podcast. Quick sign.
Yeah. And I apologize about the, uh. CPA when I regret to bring it. That was the sound of me when we did the one for the other one we did. I'm gonna do have one for the part vision. And again, the attorney wanted to look at, make sure it's.
And also, why did, you know, the city has, uh. Our workers, but since the city were so determined while up in city attorney, and I, I do have a. Advertise that we just asked you, but, uh. What I can do, everything mail that. Uh, to the commission and. You know, perhaps at the next meeting. Do you ready, if the commission's ready to. Did you process submitted advertisement from the paper, and then finalize the, uh. Drop the R and D, essentially drop description.
I will say too, on this, uh, whenever we do, I would stop to Lori at tourism, and they have that ability to, to boost up on her page, and I asked her. If that would be something that she could do, and she said, as soon as we get the, all of the information, then we want it sent out, just sent it to her, she'd go, oh, that'd be great. So she's got a lot of.
I say, um. I like Joe saying, whereas head, a real venue. But. Also, look at this one, see what you think, cause I've, I've known four folks here, and every one of them said in the comment, I didn't know what we should do all day. This starts out from the beginning, saying, here's kind of a hint of what has to be done, and then it gets a new other thing that actually shows. The Jennifer contested, she's been in for two or three months now, and I did for five, these are all duties. And a lot of these, I didn't agree with, like, how do you actually listing right now on the AOC in their job updates for a clerk? And a lot of these came from that. I was like, oh, that makes sense.
Let me ask a question, Joe. We're not. We're not. What are we include, like, what we're. Putting in the paper, what are we including? Cause we're not putting all of this.
Yeah. The ad. I got it. I have.
I can ask, yeah.
At the page. Uh, it's basically said, he's accepting application for the position of city clerk. Physician requires graduation, graduation of an accredited high school. Supplemented, supplemented by two years. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it, it condenses what was at the time. The job description, which is about a page and a half. Into this ad, a background check will require. City clerk under the general direction of the mayor of city commission, pairs maintain fantastic official records, and that's about city commissions. Perfect pairs, agendas, and minutes for, and depends on city commission. Forms work related to the received deposit, custody, investment, first, firstment of city funds. And performs other work is set for into the position description. And all the quick books, Pro Software, and Excel.
Yeah, I like the word.
So you'll see this all email at the commission, and we can edit it in specific.
And, and I will find one thing, he's right, I've seen that's where they're had page. So if you look at the email I got from the lady there, my center, the draft side, a half page, and it costs you three hundred dollars for a run. And that's one dime.
Well, this won't be a half page.
I mean, it's, I did agree with you. Are you talking about an eighty-two page?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be just.
I, I don't know. Okay.
You can post it on, with any, you can post it on, leave that.
Yes, but first and foremost, it has to go in the newspaper, that's in our personnel manual, ask me in print, in the local newspaper.
By the size it has to be.
Yeah.
So it could actually just be a small.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, and, and if you want to be sure, that's fine, but I would like to ask. And I hyperlink on the page, on the Facebook page, I hyperlink where they can go get that document out of the cloud. Let it worry about getting it down here, getting it from us, or whatever, but then we can hit that QR, and that's if the print paper says that it's short. They say it'll work, I would like to add a QR on it, take a straight to the application packet, and they can pull it up, and start filling it out, and send it.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, yeah. Um, and y'all also took, consider is, once you did an application, so, and any of there are, think about how you're going to see from there, I think done in the past is, if the two commissioners have renewed the applications, narrowed it down to however many if they want to actually interview, and those interviews could be at a city commission meeting, who could go into a second session, or call a special meeting.
Yeah.
For the purpose of interviewing and adjusting in the second session.
And I'd like to suggest that Jennifer and I do that, just because we've seen, and we got our questions to ask, to make sure the person does.
Oh, right.
About finances, make sure we, are, so we got the shots on, you know, and we ask the right questions, pose hypotheticals and.
Yeah, you may want somebody in there, I don't say that much, whether they're doing like big dogs.
No, I agree. I agree with that.
With line of two, I mean. Are you gonna get them to demonstrate, cause they can't touch her quick, what does it have to be to? Uh, it can't be three, it can't be three in the same heap, but.
Right, what I'm saying is, you could have the whole commission.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, the interview, I'm just talking about this, we do applications, we have to call follow questions to them, that way we can get down and narrow down the people for the interview, that's what I mean, I don't mean the interview. No, I hate when two could get hired somebody, that, I've said that in the past.
And with my, with my time availability, I would agree with that. Uh, if you don't mind, I'll give you a list of questions to ask about their experience, but.
Perfect, and I'm going to ask her if she uses it for. Yeah, it is more, pretty more tax basis, cause that passion will get taxed. Yeah, definitely, definitely, it'd just be for us to narrow it, like Joe said, into smaller thing, only thing is, um, did you read the entire thing?
No, yours, I have not.
No, yours, yours. Um, they need to have an equal opportunity. That's not, I don't see a personnel manual.
We need a new.
I'm gonna talk about that next.
Um, okay.
I'd like to talk about the other two on there.
Go ahead.
Since that we motioned for the RFPs, um, I think it's, I had the this on here, since we motioned for the signs, I think that we should put out, somebody to put the signs up for us, I don't think we should be responsible for that, so I would like to put out an RFP for that. Um, and that will probably data, I don't know, but, you know, for her department.
So the RFPs that you guys are putting out, where are they going?
I, I'm telling, I'm saying to do this one at a local level.
Yeah.
Um, not publish, at a local level, whether it be Facebook, as our first attempt, we don't get nobody. I'd love to post it, man, we ain't got, we don't have, we didn't budget for it.
But again, why are we not using KLC, we pay them, maybe they had an RFP.
What?
RFP.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, use their RFP.
Okay.
He's talking about an RFP, have somebody install.
I'm saying, you agree.
Yeah, and, and, and I'll tell you this, just from knowing the last time they put the green posts in, if you do local, there's only one person who volunteered to do it. And if you all put signs up, if you push on, aren't put up right, I don't know, what problem?
I guess if you have me deserting the same way, just.
Yeah, I just don't think we should, I don't think we, we should get like this work, to have that job done.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying too, but you're not, I'm just saying, you don't open them.
What I'm just saying is making sure that we're all agreeing that we would agree to pay somebody or assess, say that.
I think that's great, yes.
Um, secondly, it's parking lot, it says after vote, what I mean by this is, I think we all need to, as commissioners, and as mayor, vote on whether or not to turn that into a parking lot officially.
Go now.
That's what I'm saying, I think we should, you agree, Joe?
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm motioning.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, to turn that lot into a park.
No worries. I know what you're doing, Sam.
All those in favor?
Value favor, no?
No.
Um, I mean, can we discuss it a little bit? Now you're making a motion, now.
So, going on forward with that.
But you can discuss it.
Yeah, we can discuss.
Okay, I just want to point out. We bought Buffalo Square to build a community center. It's one out of ten years.
Okay.
We've never built anything, so if we motion to do a parking lot, let's do it, I mean, get it done. Cause we, we spent a hundred, ten thousand dollars up there for that place, and it has nothing on it, but timber, oak, two volumes, and trash feet.
All right. So getting on.
And there's supposed to be winnings coming through us next year for so development.
The voting part of that was the, the motion to say that we wanted to do that before I went into the second half of this.
And you're talking about this.
This lot over here, the old water field.
What about the lot back?
That's gonna be after this, but what I want to straighten up now is, there might be a property dispute in the future with that property. So what I'm asking the commissioners is have the guy that actually surveyed that property come back and remark that for us to validate our property lines. And what I'm asking is, I'd like to take a vote, that up to five hundred dollars, his name is Joel, or, uh, what's? Joel Day, he's still in business?
Parker? Yeah, I mean, I guess you made a motion that was seconded, and you're gonna, and that was to to go forward of doing parking lot. And probably I'd go ahead and vote on that.
That's, that's what I'm doing now, and I'm telling them that's what I'm, I'm.
Okay.
I wanted to ask, basically, instead of doing the R and P on that, since the guy has already done that survey on that property, he can come back and he's still in business, and I have been in communications with him, he would mark that one line. Four of us, four up, he would not tell me a price, but he said up to five hundred dollars, I don't know. But the thing about it is, the way I look at it is, the guy that originally done it, is going to come out and mark it again, probably our best bet.
Sure.
Right? Um, would you all agree to?
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes, sir.
We do a thousand, and you asking me if he can go and shoot that parking lot, so when we call builders and stuff, we already have something surveyed out?
Sure did, and we'll ask later.
Um, to get the grade and everything, that, cause that's gonna cost us till we go.
Yeah, you want all four lines?
Here, I'll send you this, and you can send that to him, that's the sketch of the parking lot down to the other foot, dimensions.
So, so what you're requesting is a full survey?
Yeah, for me to go to the parking lot and get done now, because we need somebody in, and they're saying, well, we're gonna charge a thousand, right there.
Well, I hadn't, I hadn't talked to, I just talked to him about the parking. Um, if, if that's what we desire, that's, I, I'm not opposed to that, the problem is, is we also have to talk about this parking lot, how do we pay for this parking lot? Okay, now we all know that we got extra money, so be it, whatever it is. I would look to us using a little bit of that money, five thousand dollars, to get it surveyed, and just put gravel down, or clean topsoil off, put paper down, or whatever the.
Millings down, and they'll compress it for a few years.
Whatever we decide, and just get it going. Um, but the main thing that I want to address is the parking lot survey, as long as y'all are okay with that, I'd like to take the motion on getting it surveyed. You make a motion? I'll make a motion, to have a property surveyed before we move forward with making it into a parking lot.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Two hundred dollars on that?
Uh, thousand. Up to a thousand, well, thank you for covering.
Any reason.
Um, secondly, city also owns property on the backside of this Spring Street. With that being said, um, parking is a huge issue for Buffalo Springs, so we went, we drove down here while we were looking at the parking lot. Uh, a huge event going on, they're parking both sides of the street, and we're gonna put up a sign that says, no parking. Uh, we actually own that property, what I'm asking, and, um, it might not be too late, might not, is if we can take that street side, and basically we'll just put a, we have a right of way between the house next to us that's shared, and we just make that overflow parking lot for the, for the, the, uh, park, we don't do any, we're not gonna cut, we're not gonna pay, we're not gonna gravel it, we're just gonna keep mowing it, or maintaining it, whatever we're doing, but utilizing that as parking.
Is, you're talking about the old jail property?
Yeah, down here in the bottom.
The true old jail.
The, the rock. Yeah.
That lines up against Spring Street, but that's also, that's two signs that I included in, what I didn't tell you earlier is, do not block drive.
Okay.
I've got, like, I have two of those, so that way if we do use that second one.
I thought it was one of the status of the street.
Well, I've got, that would go, I have one that's don't block this side.
Okay.
But I have two signs that were for literally, like, don't block their driveways, uh, like, if you're going down towards that alley, or if that driveway that goes around the back where you would have to pull in, or saying you can't block them.
We're just basically turning that into a parking lot, um, overflow, not rock or gravel, but when we put gravel or millings up here, just to be good stewardess with the people next to us, that we do that entryways coming in and out, you know, you know, just so that it's not muddy for them, and they have a lot of traffic.
Question, have they, we asked, is that ours now?
It shows it on our deed.
No, no, have they said it's ours?
Who?
That people live next door.
I don't know.
So a question for the attorneys, um, there's certain of these people in the room, we know that city property, because it just has the old stone jail on, belonged to city, and we never found anything that transferred out of our hands. Um, but the people next door, when they bought their house fifteen years ago, it wasn't the person, they told them through the realtor, through the negotiations, that was their plotted land back there, so I don't think, should we get that survey?
Well, you can't have their property from the city.
No, that would be, right, but it could cause a stink and going forward, which costs us money, but of course, it's not theirs, but.
It's all of them.
I think the more appropriate way, the better is to inform them to have, have the survey, that you're right, and just, and then you're, you know, for you to.
Three, just soon.
Session, spot. Question, very important. Question.
We've been maintaining.
And you're gonna send up a hurry.
You know, with that. You love it.
I want to make sure.
Yes and no, I mean, they still go, they're, they're, they're just, and you, we tore down all the bamboo, also they, but that was a habit, you know, we have to, that.
Then we'll go to the.
The issue we talked before about, they've been there too far, but when the survey came, he said to do that piece of rock, and you'd have to get like eight different points, eight different buildings. So, it said off the old boys like pipe, and stuff like that.
Yeah.
No, cause that quote, we should do all of our properties, like eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, we used to do that. When I was parks commissioner, they got upset because I had called at the bamboo. And at that time, we talked about getting it surveyed, and I had a surveyor come out, and he said, the problem is that when you read all of our deeds, he actually can't figure out who owns that, because to do that, he's not only gonna have to survey their property, he'll have to survey our property, the Vasonic Lodge's property, and the property, uh, there on the corner of Wood Lake and Spring Street two, to figure out all of those boundaries, to do that, and at that time, he says it was like five thousand dollars. And so at that point, the city was like, we'll just abandon surveying that event, but that's where that was left at the last hour.
If we have a flat stating that we own that, and we put up a sign, they would have to prove, they would have to pay all, all of that fees, not us.
But it still gets to the court, and we have to come around fee down, instead of an easy way, I mean.
At what expense?
And where's, where's the plan that shows, and it's labeled city property, each year, or each decade, up until this point, that it wasn't sold by the city one time, and they come up with a deed saying it was actually sold to Point Dexter's, where they lived their product. I mean, Cody's right, I mean, in the end.
Well, and let me say this, I, you know, I, I. Yeah, you know, I had to go into Scott County Parks Office and privately, and, you know, I'm starting to be for their property, and compare it, recollect the legal description for this property, and that. Um, I understand what surveyors should say, too, because they're ancient legal descriptions.
And they're changed.
To get us, uh, get a survey, you can't just, uh, isolate one piece of property, if it's all the same. Um, so I'm not saying that I can come up with rocks off, you had a digging person for years.
I, I think I have a lot of, uh, deeds about, I just don't have them with me, because I think you're in my car. Now, on that property, and that property, and all the properties up here, I dug into it a little bit, cause I have somebody else make, um, I don't know, you are right about that back there, my thing is, is if we can have proof, you go to the courthouse, and you says, in the best, in our best interest of standing around, you guys say, yeah, you all own that property.
Yeah.
At that point, at that point, I had no problem putting a sign up, and then letting them come after us.
Yeah, you know, ultimately, for me, it's called, it's surveys.
Right.
I mean, it's not, I would, I would, I mean, surveys, I don't, I can't go there with a yardstick and venture. Different than you are.
Right.
So ultimately, you would have to have surveys.
Well, we, we can maybe talk to surveyors that are gonna do that to put one line down, like, I don't know, they, they probably won't do it, but, you know, if they're up for a challenge.
Tell them.
Yeah, and he, he might have done that too, certainly.
No, I, and I think when I looked the last time, and they got mad, and I couldn't find anything, like, their real estate stuff or anything, the thing is, we have some of a sandboard map, which is from, like, the eighteen thirty through sandboard maps, Georgetown Insurance, Insurance Maps, and that sandboard map, it shows Spring Street, Curran, Wood Lake Pike, it shows the city jail right there where the bamboo is, and you can see it, if you drive down it, and I drive down, and you'll see the rocks, the foundation having to dress, I mean.
But there's beers and land again, too.
Yes, that's the problem, we need after tracing back, so you make sure somebody didn't sell to them, but I can tell you, when, like I mentioned, the doctor deal here, my grandfather's fire show was in forty-five years, she would not let me play in that backyard, because she was like, that's a city, so I knew it's no, she owned it, she would let me go in the backyard. But she gotta go from there up to see.
How about this, what is the best advice from you guys?
Well, ultimately, it's a surveyor's question.
Oh, you're saying.
But I, I would like to see their, see what reports in their deed to stand that working on that new show.
So my thing is, is if we put a fifty dollar sign in there, and then they come over and prove it to us, can we, what would we lose fifty dollars?
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I understand your point, that's that's fine, I, I don't know what their deed says.
When was the last time you were happy?
Um, I can only tell you that.
I'm not understood, but they legally, they have the right ingress, egress, it's a charity event, they're allowed to use it, it's not just street access, they are allowed to go in and out right there.
Yeah, and it's an easement, it's over, it's written as creeps, and it doesn't.
But like, nobody has that in their home description and property that they own, that's amazing, letting them do anything, you know this stuff. Like, they own that, when you let somebody do something, it means they're given a permission, yes, sir.
By description, but it seems enough to, to use the Scott County PPA's website.
And you can't pay them for any of the government, so.
Scott County Parks Office.
There's a platform when they read in the park.
Last, or last purchase in July twenty, two thousand seventeen. Are you saying you have the links, you remember?
You all had it done when you did the park. They planted natural cane grass, and like, what's being called bamboo, I think is actually not bamboo. That I understand.
Anyway.
What's your sign?
Um.
Get your sign.
Here's your sign.
What, what do we want to proceed with, let, let's let the attorneys maybe dig in and vote on that next time we come back for the lower parking lot?
Yeah, I wanted, wanted to do that, I want to, I want to.
Who's been taking care of that?
Off and on both, I mean, we tore down the bamboo, because it was a safety issue, people getting cream coming around that curb, but we mow it, and then I think.
You can't have those things.
I think you did, it keeps the.
We mowed it, or they mowed it?
Both do, I think he, bamboo, you have to kill it, when it starts getting spread, you gotta mow it again, you gotta mow it again, or it'll just keep coming back, you gotta kill the nutrients, obviously, it'll die out.
We pay.
What's okay to do on the lower? What's okay to do on the lower parking lot, you're good on the upper parking lot, I'll start making a poll, 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 because I. So I. Oh.
Okay, go ahead.
So, if we're gonna do, um, also for the head clerk, we promise you need to do one for the C P A, she has a flyer last night.
I did start it, it's, you know.
Good, so y'all, everybody's in grants upon that, I don't think you need to vote on that, do we Joe?
Uh, R A P, her C P N, yeah, um. Are you gonna publish that?
I, I think we need to publish that one.
Well then, how about I do the chat description and let them do the publishing thing?
Well, my thing, my thing is, is we already put it out once, nobody blinds and then we.
Nobody, yeah, I mean, they, then clicked on.
So we're trying to go a little harder on it this time.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Well, already said that she would care about.
Yes, I just need the actual, you said the finish, like.
I just, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm motion to, uh, do an R A P. Publish in, I guess, the paper for the C P A, once we, uh, uh. Once we get what we think it should say, I guess.
Yes. I'll send in that, all those in paper?
Posted, okay.
No, I don't want to turn it up.
No, it was for C P A.
For the C P A.
I don't wanna argue for a attorney, you don't think you wanna agree with the C P A?
Support of adjustments appointee, does any, do we have one? Anybody knows one, can we have them here in the best?
I recommended, I recommended, when I went to the county, I recommended Tanya. Um, do you think she could be at tomorrow, do you think she could be at the next meeting?
I think that she would be responsible for her past and for her future going forward. Um, I think that she would have lost her.
Can we put it out also on the Facebook page?
I don't know, say, uh.
When that was mentioned in the open media, I did get a call and they said, can realtors be on board adjustments? And then, well, but they, I mean, it's not that it may not be a definite conflict to the ethics, but you also in ethics should try to strive to not give something that might give the. Thought to somebody, I mean, it's not just a bit strictly, it's, it's, do you give the. The appearance that there could be somebody flagging issue down the road, she sells a piece of property and then she's affected property next to it before, I mean. She's a great girl, I grew up with her name, but I mean.
You have to recuse yourself.
And then we have two people and they have a deadlock and they can't vote for anything, I mean, not Peter Hickless, but it's their person that. Might have to recuse because if he's a property, I mean. It's very brave.
But Stan Fraser works as Call Haddix's secretary, she wins the. On the board with me and he's builder and she recues herself. During one of the meetings that we had, Hillary Garrison is the board chair, he works for Katie. Those are the two that are on there right now.
So you're also not appointed tonight?
Or? He's definitely be available for the next meeting.
Okay.
That's fine, I don't care if we do that, but there's, we need to get somebody on to my whole point in saying that.
I only brought Tanya, they.
Before you move, before we move on, Michelle has asked, do we need to make a motion for the head clerk?
We're not doing anything, I mean, we're just getting the act together.
So we're not gonna put it in the papers?
Next meeting, okay, really.
All right, Zach's business line first?
Um, so this is, I'm coming to you all as part of the economic development. Zach is basically doing this for, pro bono, kind of like he's not doing a very minimal payment. I'm, um, asking if the commission and everybody else is okay with me. Personally, is the economic development paying his business license for this year, getting for the next year?
Hello, um. They can look into it, you can, but the K L C, the training we had, they did talk about if you hire a professional to work for the city and they solely work with people. Work the city and they don't have a client, and you say you have a client to examine it. Not any new clients, they said weight requirements for them.
Okay.
Um, and I was trying to see, I, I think there's someone that I heard, I can get it.
But, I, I would, I would just ask you all this too. I don't think I stipulated in my contract about the fifty dollars per meeting while I'm doing the shadow period with Joe. Like, when that will work best for you all to pay that, like, do you want me to bill it to you? The day after, or do you want me to wait till? When do you build yours? So.
Y'all have, I know Mr. Hoffman's always paid yours, haven't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, does anybody propose me paying his business license for this upcoming year?
How about just pay them? So, name.
Well, it's not fair to do it.
What happens with somebody else's contract that comes in after the same.
If they're doing it for cheap, we might call.
Everybody, we'd have to achieve because.
Fifty dollars a meeting, I'm like, you know, I'm like, how many plus persons is it?
Oh, and now scripts do the, the shadow, do next year, right?
That's, that's what I'm trying to do, it's not that I'm paying, it's beginning to.
It's not slave cars, well.
Um, so yeah, it, once it starts getting, I think both like Joe, yeah, figured.
Yeah, this is just the giving up to going, so it, it'll be up to, what, July?
Unless they say they might step down sooner, since, if they feel ready, might be whatever period or. Whatever.
Did you set a definite time or do you all say? It's set once they got the lights from the day, the contract is, it won't be done, but it also leaves room for that to.
I would say it's like a six months inch, you know, like it goes on less.
I, all right, here's my motion, I will pay, I want to pay Zach's business license out of economic development.
All those in favor?
The, the motion, that's right.
All the notes.
We're gonna motion on it, so they, we're all, go ahead, Joe.
If you motion, we're just gonna do this, we're just wanna pay personally. So if you motion, if you're doing it as permission, if you just wanna pay it personally.
Okay, City Hall renovation.
Um, we got any update on that?
I, I reached out to.
Uh, behind you. Uh, Mr. Perry has been contacted loads, got, given donations for materials and stuff, they wanted to donate your time.
What?
Reached out to Amanda McCready, I reached out to, uh, and you know, their name was on the. But I asked Michelle to tell us that I've actually reached out to, uh, eighty-four lumber as well. And they've got a program and some people I just found out, just they have programs, I'm gonna reach out to them too.
Thank you.
Um, and I got all the dimensions in here the other day to give them, the process, they say they do do that, so.
Long as we got it.
Um, I will see, you know, diagram I had for the parking lot, I'll send you all some of my other thing at home, I'll send you that diagram for this in here. And I put on it to ask in three phases, uh, I wanted to do, um, this one first to get the file cabinets in there and secure.
Yes.
The next phase was to do the, across the thing you, the mayor said. Uh, across the thing, um, like the mayor suggested for safety and security, the clerk can't keep people out of way from the stuff that don't really need to be in. And then, uh, the other one was to, yeah, it was redo the lights. To get, uh, more immediate, cost efficient ones in here. So I asked for three stages and the thing is, I'll be able to give one.
Yes.
But to give all of it, that's a step.
Awesome.
So the lighting, is that just for materials?
Yeah, that's my worry.
Yeah, but we can talk.
You probably knew what they have. And just to make sure we're on the same page, we all, when we talked about in that meeting, we're gonna wall this in. So my, my thought was in this, I'm gonna put, because I have to go set loads, the materials guys has to draw up a load of materials. I would like to put, like somebody said about, put TV there, which will require boxing it in the backside. And put in the, the box, if you hook all the peripheral, those wires and all the connections into it. Um, because we talked about that even easier way if we start promoting, somebody's not hearing, they mean to promote on that. Plus, if somebody comes in the flash drive and they wanna show something.
Just make sure.
I have a box together, they know they may be doing it kinda hard. So that those cabinets don't get.
Those cabinets.
Oh, for the, the, to access?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying just like the lip of top.
Yeah.
Um, probably, yeah. Start straight.
Because I'm saying that you don't.
Yeah. So, why don't you do that?
Keep up on it, I don't, I don't.
Good. Um. All those cabinets, the five, it's not this one, it would leave ones out here for her to have day to day, this, this will year out.
Yeah, but the rest will be locked up. Better set up, you know, that, get him to do that, so.
That's true, because I was figuring, get somebody to rip these cabinets out, he might have no experience.
He doesn't mind though.
I just, they're, they're like, have nails glued on the back of the wall.
Yeah, we'll figure this out, y'all get it.
Tom's got some.
While we're talking about renovations, I've already spoken to you about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do you want these?
I think you probably rather just do without.
You turn that in, you don't use kitchen, do you?
Yeah, why?
Well, not yours, we might be, there's a different brand. City Hall was, just to go through a government slash business aspect, but there is through loads that help, uh, Eros Helping Grant. It has to be tied to something like military or, or fire department or police. You might be able to look something for that for him on that grant, I didn't look at it, read it, because I was like, you know, that's at City Hall.
What would you use specifically? Replace or remove another.
They're probably right, because they get that. But we've had. Inter.
I could, I've got a couple of costume and bars to us.
What happened to?
Yeah, we do.
That take place?
They're only doing. It's probably inspect, it's probably not.
Are you not feeding the cats? Oh, I probably get their mouths.
So we've already talked about the Amazon. Um, yeah, Amazon account?
This is basically. Getting Michelle access to get a little. If we need something, right? So, the idea behind this, most.
Yes.
Is if we're, is if we're.
ABC computer.
Right.
They were at times and it would get canceled every time she tried by. I don't know if there is something that we're doing wrong with the Amazon account. Can't, I don't know. Part of it is the operator usually, but I had to put, I ended up putting the city, I was trying to link the bank account. Because it's over my card limit. Yeah, well, my credit card limit is like, what, a thousand? So I didn't have enough on my card to be able to cover everything.
Yes, I know they got rid of the, we linked the couch, but they still had the like net thirty type stuff like other places have.
I could not find that option on there.
Yeah.
It, but do you have to be business prime to do that, yes, okay, there, we're not business prime and that's why it wouldn't let us do that.
If we were business prime, we could order our supplies in, get them shipped next day, it'd be like cheaper, you know, that part.
Am I?
Yeah, I made account, but she.
Oh, I don't think so, no.
At the end of year, you can.
And we did, you saw that listing, I hope he's.
So do you wanna go the route of just doing business prime?
Is it like a hundred and ten dollars now still?
Yeah, I mean, that's free.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna order paper beer next day.
Yeah.
And, and it's all shipped to you free, yeah, because we, that'd be good too, because we talked about like, like Mr. Meldge just said, the ten year we're doing detail breakers, we kept seeing those office. But we're like, what office?
Well, and it, it'll, yeah, it'll wait all out.
Yeah, and, and, yeah.
Okay.
And we did talk.
Motion on that.
I'll make a motion to go business. Business prime, all in favor?
Um, we said limit, it's, it's like five hundred dollars.
Uh, as long as it's under five hundred a year?
Well, two hundred a year.
Two hundred a year.
It does sound probably like that's a hundred and ninety. Hundred and ninety, there you go.
As long as it's under a hundred and ten.
I'm trying to raise it every year.
Yeah.
They're like.
It's a fascinating, you vote on it here. Yeah, we'll do that, yeah. All right, and vote for both of us.
Uh, thank you. Next, we just mentioned that about ordering supplies from your event, and we still have the same mind in the bedler meetings. Can you please want supplies, fire department, that you can order to Michelle, right?
Every month you need to, Michelle, you order to there, that way you can. We should have like a overall city account.
John, the police department already has.
Oh, you already have one? And you had your, uh, tenant forms on that and both of you?
Are you all, are you all your.
She's scratch or gifts.
So that's the case, we need to ask them this year for their statement, you know, the preacher's statements in the year, but your viewer was bothering there.
So we're gonna agree, everything I purchased monthly, maybe she gets an A P O, forms, everything coming, she has.
But the, like, the Amazon thing is just a more detailed version of that that we kinda have to look at.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? So, you don't have a, a business prime and you have a business prime and we're gonna have a business prime, are we? But they'll brawl through them? So like that fire party case, is that in their budget, like they?
Yeah, yeah.
They'll technically.
Their business prime, we pay for his business prime.
So why wouldn't they just have one?
Yeah, so.
Would everybody log?
I think you're right in the problem. Because you can't ask, any of your responsible, she, her orders, you can't.
Everything is, is it'll be a little different, they won't use credit card, they just purchase number.
But, I'm mainly using for, we need emergency supply, just like, we had a medical call the other day, our pulse officer. That's something that we use on every medical call, that's a vital piece of medical information that we need. I can't wait three, four, five days to get that. Get fit at will, I have to contact her, I have to come down here, I have to.
You'll have access before the day. But she'll, she'll have access, she'll have access to the account and then she will.
We have one for the entire city.
Yes, yeah.
Everybody has access.
Would everybody have a different login so you know who's.
Everybody can have five. Oh, it's one seventy-nine.
Your P O, uh, so like, just to keep things simple, your P O will be F V for fire department and today's day. And here's the, the, for police department today's day, that kinda thing.
I need to go back and amend my, my motion for the business prime, it's one seventy-nine here.
I will, yeah, if it's. Wait a minute, we have three prime accounts.
Yeah, it's three hundred dollars a year.
That's what I think, that's why I should be merged into just one, every, you have five different users, it can be used, just do it, I mean.
Your, save your account for now, because it's gonna take a minute to set this up. Uh, because it took me a while to set up. Uh, I would get on the phone when you set it up and talk to somebody in person and tell them exactly what you're doing.
So, so what we'll do, let her set hers up, it'll become the cities, they just won't renew theirs. Because they've already paid it.
Yeah, there are.
We can't get that money back.
Yeah, it's true, yeah, and expired expires and they.
Just you're all don't renew, is that, is that what?
Well, in the meantime, if we do find users, give them each, give them each a number which would use, if they, remember, all women city government. They could try to start getting used to use from the city when they're logging in from that. And they could change the address wherever they want to ship to.
At the point of sale, so. Doesn't have to come here.
Don't worry, I'll be calling Ken.
So that, the people are very helpful. Like, apart from, once you get over this, make sure if they just.
Get something expensive, I, it's not the same, my house, because my house.
I got cameras, so if you stole it, they take it off the doorstep.
I would say, I mean, if the business account is anything like your regular business or a regular account, you can have multiple.
Just elect.
Yeah, if you can have, you can still have a ship right to you, you can have a ship to you, none of that changes. And the only thing that changes is you don't use credit card to use, I think I know, you can be able to do two hundred and sixty five.
Yes. How do I need to type that in that? Did I just correct it like this?
Just the original motion.
Yeah. Okay.
You wanna say one eight?
Yeah, let's say one eight.
Bend it again.
Just in case, you know.
Yeah, okay, that's awesome. All right, chief's credit cards. What are we doing with those? We've, I think we've already fixed that issue, have we not?
I don't know.
Fixed.
Well, it's mine.
That's yours now, it's all.
Yes.
What's the limit on the credit cards?
Here's twenty five hundred.
Find it out.
It still has to be approved, you don't protest, so.
Yeah. Let me tell you why I don't think we should change that.
They had things during that. I know, yeah.
We just ran into it with the, now we can do it with the P O, but just ran into that with trying to be the brave B C. I think the question was, do we want chiefs, families, chiefs to have credit cards, or do we want just chiefs to have credit cards? Want to change anything, or just leave alone?
Oh. Um. Oh, sorry, I think I, one thing, if they're playing about a hundred and they're a thousand, I mean, I think both should probably should be equal on the same ground, that would be fifteen hundred, I mean.
Chief, this is chief.
Or chief, chief is fifteen hundred, I'm.
No.
That's twenty five.
Angela's too hard, because you saw the stuff we had in budget, trying to figure out between four cards.
So, we'll just leave it where the chiefs have credit cards?
You all saw the budget, unless it was dig into. And it's gonna change anyway, as soon as, if we go down to bank, because you're super central bank, we don't choose them, we have to.
Yeah.
Think about it.
Very nice motion.
Uh, so what is it for, just the chief said, uh, make motion, just the chief said.
I'll do all the purchasing for us, basically.
But you're gonna purchase it through Amazon?
Yeah.
No, I'm saying, like, if we use our credit card, like, I would usually, I think about something, and we can't get it at Amazon, like, I'm used to one always visit the person. Ah. I did.
But can you, what we're asking is, can you not deal with the O instead of just using the credit card? I understand that sometimes it takes a little bit longer.
It's on what it is, I mean, if it's something emergent, we gotta do, just like, how to go have a tire repair, you know, so, I can't do a P O on that, because that's gotta be paid for right then and there.
Where does that repair that?
Way to put two names on the card?
Yeah, no, I don't know, they do, we got to think about it, you have to have a person's name on it, usually, city stand round, you can just hand it to you, and say, state brand. No, no, I mean.
I mean, that may just be something that chief has to deal with.
Yeah. That's the.
I mean, what's the issue with it?
Just mean, the issue is budget, trying to figure out where they're being spent, when we get things, it just says supply, nothing else on it, and the issue was.
I've never just submitted anything.
You asked me a question, I was answering.
You didn't have to be smart about it, I was explaining, I've never submitted anything that says.
I wasn't smart, Andrew, I wasn't smart. As a matter of fact, I neglected a second ago, when you had to say, no, I'd like to say this, when you said you had to go to Amazon to buy a thing, you can go to Walmart and buy the exact same one you bought from Amazon, but you had to have Amazon card to go to Amazon to get it, that makes no sense, this is cheap.
It does, when it's three o'clock in the morning? And I can have.
Walgreens, that's valid too.
So. Well, they were, I'm ready for you to do that.
Good afternoon.
And if you take the credit card away, I wouldn't be able to do that.
I'm very tired.
We can't have everybody have credit cards, that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna take it down to where just the chiefs have a credit card. I don't know what that things needs to be worked out between you and Chief Hendricks, but obviously, there needs to be discussion between the two of you, so that you all can figure out how to move forward from that.
And be a credit card, with the product one, it could be them in my name or chief's name, depending on how he wants to handle it.
Last time we got into the bank, said it has to have a purchase name on it.
Yeah.
I was saying, and if chief decides that he wants it in my name, is that doing all purchasing, are you fine with that?
No, no, that's what we're telling you, it has to be under the chief.
You want to respect that motion? Did you want to make that motion? Uh, motion, um, as you said, the chief's cards only, um. What's the story to others, yeah, running through the tire, um.
Like, you want to keep it at twenty five, or?
Twenty five.
That, I'm, I'm still uncomfortable with this. Uh, so the. The issue there, multiple cards, is we can't see what went on the transaction.
Couldn't see specifically on transactions, we kept getting, um, uh, kept getting. The little fees they were charging on each credit cards, for some reason, we couldn't figure out, we even called them, um, and there's other credit cards issues, we had to pay a seventy five dollar thing to restate a car days for gas, I mean, have these credit cards out there, might be good and convenient? So, when they start whittling down those city funds, we saw all the things, I mean, you all asked me numerous means, what's office supplies, I couldn't, I couldn't give you an answer, after, they were pulled over there, somebody in the voice just said office supplies.
Yeah.
The bill from the thieves turned and said office supply, I know you, was it five thousand pairs of pants?
Was it office supplies, what came out of our system, or was it office supplies, what he turned in?
To me.
Because the reports that we get from her, listen, um, are what comes out quick.
Some of the P O's just had, uh, receipts, and it, like, general receipt, not like, big pens, you know, a ream of paper, and it had a, which they're good about doing P O's, and P O's, it office supplies.
I can answer that question, I've never submitted anything that's office supplies, I get very detailed list of every single time.
Recently, I'm talking about all the way back to July. Yes, okay. I could, I could pull you, I probably got some deals in here, I don't know why we're arguing this point. I don't know this, please somebody tell me this.
I just know from my perspective, uh, as a business owner, that everyone of my employees has a card, and that's because they're young, you know? And I wouldn't want one person not to be able to do what they need to do, uh, especially if they're out and about somewhere, because they don't have a credit card to cheat those.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is the reason that it's just saying office supplies, based off of like QuickBooks and stuff like that, because we don't have the ability to.
That's what I.
Expand on.
Yeah, it could be.
Could that change if we got to hire, and it was just a office supply?
The bill wanted that, just in the law, I was explaining this, Jennifer, they were showing her in QuickBooks, that I break it down a lot more, put a bigger description in there, but when you see it, like, on the finance report, it like cuts part of that description off. So, like, it's, it's there. Yeah.
Which, that's great, but, yeah, QuickBooks is that a factor way, you don't need it, because you've covered it already. If it was, uh, back in bits, it goes to office supply, if it was stamp, it goes to. Whatever, that didn't go with that, it's different. And when you do your reports at the end of the month, or at the end of the year, you know exactly detail line I have, you know, that they spent thirty thousand on uniforms, twenty thousand on paper, ten thousand on pens, where.
What, even? Or, you know, coded office supplies, and then put pens, paper, whatever, just kind of a general idea, job supplies was for businessness, but.
My question is, before we run between the motion to vote on this, can we maybe implement this new system to see if there are changes, to where, like, it wouldn't be confusing?
We can, we can, and I'm, I think, I think our idea behind it, it's just that this past budget was so extremely tight, that we need to probably keep a better handle on who has a credit card, who doesn't have a credit card, and how much we're spent, because.
My thing is.
Two hundred and four hundred dollars debt, and still never need a, never need anybody's permission, because it's not over a thousand dollars, uh, that, that, that might have to get, because that was something that I was.
Here's my thing, if you honestly think that chief and them are not gonna invest the credit card, credit card back and forth to one another, if it's, we're wired to each other.
I mean, yes.
I mean, to be honest with you, Andrew's probably gonna hold it, if the chief doesn't hold it.
Or a question, if, if that's the case, and we all assume that, probably we'll just go to one card, one card to be lost, it's one card to pay fees on.
That's for them to handle, I guess, if we motion that.
Yeah. I'm not sure what the fees are, maybe it's just the banks. Uh, I know, but, but my card is, but I don't have that fee. It could just be a back mission.
Yeah.
So, well, my thought is. What's the pleasure?
My thought is, was, uh.
I mean.
What part it is, is that what?
I mean, the motion's been made.
Okay, so you motioned? Anybody say? I think we should, they're into the system.
Do you want to just pay more?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would, I would, I would like to see just before, because if we could, in my opinion, like, I, I do agree with the, like, I don't like the fact that, like, you can go out and spend three hundred dollars, and somebody has to do three hundred dollars, I think, so you passed the one thousand dollar limit, and it, we didn't have to get asked, but, I. I get the fact, from your perspective, that if you're the one that's going out and buying a majority of the stuff, that this could make it harder, but if there is a way that we can break this down, if we can actually, is updating the system to have our needs, the QuickBooks, I just, I feel like. Just so we can, and see it, and if it's still just as, as messy than I have to, yeah.
So, we can table this then, until next, next meeting, do we need to vote on that?
Well, no, if there's no sense, I think, it fails, it fails for lack of a second.
Okay. Are you good with that?
Well, if it fails, then you can't bring it back up.
Thank you.
You can bring it up. Not without changing.
At the next meeting. Yeah.
Change to what's being asked of them.
Yeah, we can, you can bring up another thing, but you can't.
Completely off subject, but did we vote on, or do we need to vote on the whole two twenty seven yard sale thing?
We do.
We did, did we?
No, I didn't hear. Uh, all I heard was voted to waive the.
Waive the participants' fees.
Yeah, we did that.
We did all that?
There you go.
Yes, okay, all right, moving along then, huh?
Yeah.
For the two twenty seven, no.
Yeah, waive fees for the Buffalo Square.
And they don't look like it back, for the venue presentation, but it's.
Do you have a date on that?
But on the, um, the yard sale? Well, I can see like.
It's last week. Did I, when you, that was one, that was one.
It's August thirtieth.
Two hundred and seven, yeah, yes, same Portland. Orlando weekend, sorry. Do they still need to register with us, that they're gonna be?
We are not, but. No, I mean, what are you guys thinking? I, I mean, that, there's no way to know how many people have the per fee.
Is it, do we need a motion for that, do we ever need to register your board there, I'm sorry, do we need a motion for that?
Next meeting, everyone's gonna show, and, or what, what she is asking for, ask about the two twenty seven.
You'll waive the fees and.
For the two, yes.
Yes, okay. Perfect. I'll make a motion that we waive all fees for participants on the two twenty seven yard sale for August thirtieth. And use, and.
And allow you to.
And the use of Buffalo Square.
Right?
It's a city property, the, as people said, it's been listed.
Yeah, city property, how about we do that, Buffalo Square and city property? And, um, was it August thirty?
Oh, um, does anybody rented the park down here, or has anybody rented either park for that weekend?
Absolutely. Okay, all right, one year tight, and I want to move along, thanks.
I'll be there.
All right, all those in favor?
Is there a second?
Yeah. I got a hand of myself.
Uh, Jennifer motioned. In second. And all in favor?
Everybody?
Can I make a little, uh, waving motion? So, I looked back at my notes, I saw we motioned that Sam in here, but I didn't see we waived the vendors that day for the Christmas, uh, Christmas market thing.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, I thought we did.
We haven't mentioned, yes, I don't know for sure, but.
Okay, let's make a motion to waive that as well.
We can wait a minute, I'm, yeah.
Huh?
If we want to wait a minute, it's coming from that.
Okay. Okay, moving along. If we're not waving fees, can we waive the ones for the Buffalo Dave vendors? For the what? Buffalo Dave vendors?
That would be definitely proven.
We did, yeah, we already did that. Okay, I didn't, I didn't remember asking, so, I think we do it every year, yeah.
It's, well, we're gonna sign a proof, we think about that. And you're gonna press.
Okay, can we move along now?
Yes, yeah.
Yep, everybody?
Yeah.
Talk about an audit.
Audit.
For an audit.
What are your thoughts? Questions?
What's it entail?
Uh, we gotta basically put out a, an R and B to find somebody to do a forensic audit.
That's the question.
No, this is a one time.
This is a one time.
And.
Is required?
No, no, this is.
This is something.
As the city is requesting.
Yeah, um.
Expensive, potentially?
Yes, it is expensive, and I did reach out to, because I told you I work for the state, she now works for private firm, and she said, you need to look at three or five years, because one year won't touch.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with that, it's definitely, it's gonna cost money, and it's gonna be expensive, but.
My thing is, what do we benefit?
We benefit lots, if something don't come down the pipe, and, and, because we're still, we're responsible for everything we know that may or may not have been done right in the past, I mean, sure, that's in the law. Two benefits if you bring your CPA in, they know they're starting from book day one, zero, and if we bring, if it's Michelle here, or another clerk, they know from day one here, it's zero, no issue, no questions, none.
On top of that, if they do find things, we will know.
I would say it is. So, we talked about something in executive session, since she knew, can I tell her personally later, about what I'm talking about?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so, maybe talk about the one, um, executive session, without leaning too much into it, that audit, at least for five years, will find that money can be paid. And it gives a definite answer that, right then and there, say, but forensic audit, that didn't occur.
Uh, we can put an R and B up, I'm, I'm not against this, but I think we should go also reach out to people where y'all know people, because we may not get, and somebody requesting.
Yeah.
I just don't, I would prefer at least somebody outside of.
Outside of town, and, and probably just keep anybody else from pointing fingers, probably not people who really know, if it's somebody who knew their accountant, yeah.
Yeah.
I would, uh, I would like to make a motion that the city get forthwith, seeing how much the cost, and what we need to go forthwith that, and then we will motion on to use those people, once we find.
So, do it to an R and B, get their quotes in.
Well, it's not even really an R and B, I think that it should be.
Well, if not, somebody's gotta be responsible, go save this, exactly what you want to look at, R and B is written there, and they know what they're getting into, probably coming.
Yeah.
Does the K O B have?
They might have, people they could recommend.
I, I say that we, we motioned it to make the ministry, financial ministry, funds a lot.
What's wrong with that?
K O C, oh. And then you come back with information.
I would just say.
Is it?
I hope you don't like the price tiers, because it's something that's.
How about this, is it in best interest of the commission, we have, we move forward with looking into the forensic audit? And should we, do we need to make a motion, or like?
I, I don't think so, but.
We have some.
Depending on contractor.
I, I didn't want to want to benefit.
What?
He wants to know the benefit.
You're an accountant.
Call you later.
That's not an exception to the rule, is it?
Talking about hiring, I'm very busy. Um. Uh, I understand the one thing. You know, that, but. Yes, they're new.
Mm-hmm.
Another purpose.
Possibly.
They may have like, oh, man, just don't.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't talk to anybody, I didn't talk to you, but I never, I, I talked to you, right? Yes, I probably get your first. I'm not coming, nobody else is coming.
All right, next question's open.
Yes.
All right, U T V, let's talk about that.
I'll go first, then, um, I would like for the city of Stanton Ground to look into adopting the U T Vs, ordinance that county has put out. Uh, for, for the county, if they're on their first vote, going to the second vote, um, I would like to say that. What I've seen from their ordinance and everything else, uh, we already have a golf cart ordinance, um, not much different, run some over here. Also, nowhere in the city limits can you get above thirty five miles an hour.
Guess we should ask the chief to weigh in too, those.
No, we don't. He's got that good thing, he's gotta use it, see how fast people.
Does he have a tank back there or something?
Um. I do see a problem. I do see a problem potentially that we need to look at with residential areas, like, uh, what I mean by that is like neighborhoods.
I don't know, it feels.
The way that I look at this is no different than somebody in a Jeep, no different than lawless. This is just me, I'm not saying we motion or anything, but this is just me proposing this, that we adopt what they're talking about. Now, we can ask the chief to agree with that.
And what is their adoption?
Basically, there's a lot, long list of ordinances, and it even excludes us right now because we have not adopted their ordinances.
Yeah.
Um, and I can also tell you this, guys, if, if it gets killed in the next one, when they read it second one, the second meeting, we can still pass it, uh, just nobody would be allowed to ride outside of the city limits. The thing is, we already have golf carts, and these are supposed to be of age people, sixteen years of age, they have to wear helmets, they have to be licensed, insured, insured. It's no different than a car going down the road.
The only thing that concerns me is the noise.
But how, it's the same as a car.
They're inspected.
They're inspected.
Well, you say too.
If you make a phone call to him and say, hey, this thing is making noise, he comes out, it's on him to whether or not it's a nuisance or, uh, it's no difference than a diesel truck going by here just carrying on. They do it all day long.
Which is best for me to have.
He doesn't have.
Well, there's a guy, you stay over in the state law that can hear something twenty feet away, like, taking toys on.
Yeah.
If I can stand twenty feet away and hear your stereo, you might be making side vision for that, it's not by a leak. I'm attending that job, it's like, there's.
Anybody having thoughts on it?
What are your thoughts? Well, that's chief. Uh, I should, we should have started out with that. The volume that we can say about, uh, this fee limits that, you know, that are posted to the U T V.
For that hours. Do you?
Hours.
Yeah.
Well, you know, be anytime day except for the juveniles, when you have.
That's what I was thinking, uh.
Maybe, that's something we'd have to look into, all right, but also, they can't go within twenty mile radius.
Outside, yeah.
It works, yeah.
Why don't you pull your bike and shit along, you know, right?
So, or just a side note for everybody, I'm only aware of six people that are registered to U T V. So.
Yeah.
It's not like everybody's gonna go out. These things are forty thousand dollars.
Do we, I've never read.
By yourself.
I never read the golf cart. You were, you were doing that. Do we borrow the golf cart to go in that entrance?
Yeah. And they also take those and all that. They also have to be.
They have to be strictly home inspected.
I mean, what, uh, maybe for those of you who want to have the.
But I. I, I think, this, I, this just me talking, and they need to, we need to hear everybody else's.
And I think what we can have at the next meeting then is just, if I, you have to, Scott County, we're not something like to put a six, it's campus around, it's the. Doesn't have, have a reading, it's just for the commission to consider and then decide, uh.
Basically, what we're asking is a move forward.
Right, yeah, so just have it for discussion and to answer.
Okay.
So, so we motion on that or just?
Exactly.
Okay, moving along. Lastly, planning and zoning zoning review.
Yeah, yeah, um, I'm for it. Um, so this is, I think we should just basically put a vote on it, they come in and talks, um, we know what it's about. Um, realize that we have to appoint, try to appoint, um, committee and people that are invested in this community.
My point, he said he would open up people want to be on, if I wasn't speaking down, because I, I just said we make sure it's not just business owners, to make sure people, the community.
It's a stakeholder.
It's a stakeholder in the city. He can be in the county, if he owns property.
I don't think. If we're, if we're in front of committee, I don't think it should be eBay outside of zones, it's, we're a committee, saying we had that. Zone changes, that's not right.
So that's confession. Uh, what are we looking to get out of it?
Well, I mean, it's probably, he also said his proper zone, but it's like, he's like, he said it was like a team, so it's not like it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Like, he would come out rezoning, so they were properly zoned and we don't have to pay the ton of money that.
They have to, and we still have the last step.
Yeah, we can still get it done. Basically, what this is, for us to vote on it, we accept it or not, and we have to write a formal letter, as Mr. Holden said, that the city is interested in participating and has the support for them to move forward, but.
When he said that he could either come out and like rezone, if we disagreed with some different things, he could still change it, like, he wasn't getting all the.
And he was, yeah, he also had.
What if we want that?
To be rezoned as a city.
There are people paying proper.
What purpose?
In proper taxes, maybe, uh, even, uh, well.
Proper tax, they still pay the tax rate for the property.
Yeah, but they're living in, uh, commercial, or what area possibly, and.
Are we looking to make downtown just a downtown? Are we looking to, what is our goal?
The best interest, you know, whatever's for the city, I think that's what's up, up for grabs. Uh, however, they, it's not us, you can be elected, but it's not us making that decision. If.
Well, well, they, they, they do it based on some of our directions, but. Well, except for in the end, he did say, I'm sorry, I was taking away, it sounds like threats, like you often do it, we do it ourselves. And Mr. Meddlem knows, we both went and spoke about a certain piece of property, and they basically said, doesn't matter, if you've already decided, we don't care what you think. So, and, you know, we're talking about, I told you just said something, and I have debated on this for, since we talked about the last meeting, I didn't know we were gonna have it on agenda this week. Debated, prayed, all people wise are the media, and I, I've, I've got to say, we all need to remember, less than a hundred and ten days ago, we had a family coming here who owns a commercial property, like Mr. Meddlem was talking about, that'd been living in it, they've been living fifteen years, present from ten years, and that was the whole impetus of them coming, and we as, or, sorry, poor fists of the commission said, we do not have an interest in your situation, we will not in the future, and we're not pursuing anything. And then I get family members call me about how we have filed something officially. And that's public record. That we filed something officially against them. And then luckily, they called me next day and said we found out that was fraudulent, and it wasn't the commission that filed that. And now here we are, a hundred and some days later, we're going after those people.
Nobody said them.
I just said, that's the only commercial property to live in, Tokyo.
Nobody said that.
That's the only commercial property to live in. You just said.
No, sir.
We said you got commer, people in commercial property.
This, like this means them?
You said people living in commercial property, that's the only commercial property.
This, we take a vote on.
Robert Duncan was gonna be one.
That's the one I point that, but that's okay, since you want to phone names to it.
Which one you pointing out?
Robert Duncan.
Robert Duncan?
He lives in.
And he actually wants to be on this, which.
He's got that changed.
Go ahead and research, I don't care. Let's take a vote on this, there's enough, if anybody else wants to talk about it, it can either, it's either going fast or not, and let's do, let's do a roll call over.
Can we do, can we do it on?
Can we do more? First of all, what is the motion?
Can we do it on truth before we vote? Robert Duncan is residential, he got it changed. It's changed right here, is he, I don't know if they changed, it's residential, right there on the tax, it's not, not commercial. But, I mean, I guess I'm lying, there's the.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, it's all good. He's also a, a very interesting stakeholder.
Move point, we're gonna vote on that. We're gonna vote on whether we want to go forward with the planning and zoning zoning review.
Was that, hey, was just clear about, is there a motion made?
Yeah, but you do not.
That's what we're doing now.
Okay.
You want, can we just do it as a roll call?
Or we got back to motion.
Well, motion and second.
Okay, I'm motioning to carry on with the planning and zoning review process for the city of Stanton Ground.
I'll say. Now, now we do. Commissioner Madus?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Prager?
See.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
No, ma'am.
So we will have to write a formal letter to them, and just the letter, like, no, this is not us actually resoning it, this is us getting started. Right?
Yeah, I'm talking about.
Are you going to handle the word? Who you first?
Right on.
All right.
But like, you know, for this.
I think we should. I should tell you the other stuff that we got on there.
Have you wanted to say? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, there's some question. So if a person is living in a property that is classified as a business and is rezoned, or they're living in a business and it's rezoned, it's kept as a business, what happens? Are they allowed to continue living there because they've already been living there?
It's my reason, it's stupid, that. My experience, my understanding is that there are, there are a lot of different, something. What am I trying to say? Options? That are, uh, it doesn't have to be just business or just residential. So, I mean.
Will this potentially kick people out of their.
Well, no.
Okay.
That's all I'm doing.
Not that I'm aware of, that's not different. That is not the purchase, and I tell you, even if we get to that, e- even if it was to come to that, it would still, we would still have the final say in voting number.
And I don't think anybody, nobody, to my knowledge, nobody has that intention.
Okay.
And I think, I think it suggests a voting for, now, we need, we can not necessarily vote for specific office that we want to.
And there are those five people who consist of, of the body. Their best judgment to go down there to come back and give us information and telling what they think everything should be zoned. Or maybe this needs an, an altercation or a grand father's.
I'm sure.
Altercation. Because like the trailer, the trailer park is a grandfather again, like, I don't, I don't believe you can touch it.
No, they won't.
Yeah.
Um, we asked Mr. Step in our pharmacy tonight, we followed what he said, not those committee people, they still have two public forums for people to come talk to.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 it's, it's, uh, yeah.
At least.
We need to, we need to put out in the city's page that we are looking for committee members for stakeholders.
For rezoning, uh.
Commission.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, I pray to you. They're gonna.
Oh, okay.
Well, that, that's one thing he did tell us, though, is if you pass it.
Actually, um, I was saying, in her letter, she could say how many people are gonna do comprised of, it may say you can have more than that.
Yeah, you may have thirty.
They might, good, send a letter and say, um, can we have any, that we have any thoughts, we can say I'm opposed.
I have no problem with it.
I know your hand is gonna. Yeah, well, no, this is, this is, I'm not bringing my hands in. I just want, I get a copy of, I don't know what my budget is, what you're all about. I've got, I never received a copy of the budget.
Stop, yes, you want a copy of the budget?
So you just email me.
I got.
Ten dollars, twenty-seven thousand. I don't have a, or the shell, you can work on getting him a, a copy of the budget unless we're safe. For this.
No.
But, no.
No.
Okay.
I've got the copy I sent to Melissa, it was the last one we did, she took off a bunch of things, like, took off some of the recruitment retention stuff.
And I would like to just honestly tell y'all, thank you for giving back the radio and everything, I know you're amazing. Uh, it's not something that we, we asked, in the, directly forward, we ended up having to, because the county asked for one back, but, uh, we're gonna go to.